I would like to call tonight's meeting of the Tacoma Park City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Cersei?
Here.
Councilmember Landman?
Here.
Councilmember Dballa?
Present.
Councilmember Schlegel?
Present.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Here.
Councilmember Hansak?
Present.
Councilmember Weselad?
Here.
Wonderful. Well, good evening, everyone. This evening, our agenda consists of proclamation and recognition of Economic Development Week, followed by two presentations. The first is the Council Compensation Committee interim report, followed by the Board of Elections 2024 election report. The council will then move forward to adoption of minutes from March the 8th, January the 29th, and February the 5th, followed by council comments and city manager comments, and then we will be done this evening. But I just want to warn my colleagues, don't get too excited because some of our later meetings will be a little longer. On Saturday, October the 25th, is Monster Bash. Want to encourage everyone to come out. On Wednesday, October the 29th, the council will meet at its regular time of 7:30. We will have a voting session. The first item is the resolution setting a path forward for the community connectors. The next item is the First Reading Ordinance amending the Tacoma Park Code regarding the use of the city seal or logos. And then we will have a work session where we will be joined by our lobbyists in Annapolis and Secot to discuss legislative priorities for the council. On Friday, October the 31st, is Halloween. Just want to remind everyone to be cognizant of little ones that may be out on the roads. On Wednesday, November the 5th, the council will start at, meeting will start at 7:30. We will have a proclamation and recognition of November as Municipal Government Works Month, followed by a presentation Quarterly Financial Report for the first quarter. We then have a voting session, the Second Reading Ordinance amending the Tacoma Park Code regarding the use of city seal logos. And then we have quite a few work sessions. The first is amending the Tacoma Park Code to expand the homeowner property tax credit program. The second is the Contract for Rent Stabilization Study. The next work session is the Plan to address unlawful restricted covenants, followed by Options to address the requirements of the Noise Ordinance. And the final item will be Immigrant Support Services. On Tuesday, November the 11th, is Veterans Day. City offices and facilities are closed Tuesday in recognition of the holiday. And on Wednesday, November the 12th, the council will meet at 7:30. We will have three presentations that evening. The first is FY25 Annual Compensation Financial Report and Audit. Next is the Police Employees Retirement Plan Actuarial Evaluation. The City Manager FY27 Budget Projections. We'll then have voting sessions. Single Reading Ordinance awarding a contract for rent stabilization study. Single Reading Ordinance authorizing procurement of a new council dais. Single Reading Ordinance amending the Tacoma Park Code to expand the homeowner property tax credit program. And the First Reading Ordinance approving funding for immigrant support services. We will then have two work sessions that evening. The first is Finalization of Legislative Priorities. And then we will have a work session on the New Hampshire Avenue Recreation Center. On Monday, November the 17th, is the Community Budget Forum. It will be offered both remotely and virtually. And November the 19th through the 22nd is the National League of Cities City Summit in Salt Lake City. And myself and a few of my colleagues will be attending that event. So now I'm going to read the proclamation and recognition of Economic Development Week. Economic Development Week in Maryland, October 20th through the 24th, 2025. Whereas Economic Development Week is a time to highlight programs, policies, and activities that seek to improve the economic well-being of City of Tacoma Park residents, businesses, and all Marylanders. And whereas Maryland Economic Development Week is celebrated annually in October and was established to emphasize the importance of economic development for the state of Maryland. And whereas Tacoma Park is an active member of the Maryland Economic Development Association, a nonprofit organization established in 1961 whose mission is to enhance the knowledge and skills of its members, encourage partnership and networking among people committed to bringing jobs and capital to Maryland, and promotes economic development as an investment in Maryland. And whereas MIDA members promote statewide economic well-being by working to improve Maryland's business climate and the professionalism of those in the field of economic development, including other professionals with a direct interest in the economy of Maryland, though through its regular educational meetings, special programs, and community-driven projects. Members address diverse issues and where, projects, members, and address diverse issues. And whereas Economic Development Week provides the opportunity for community-minded organizations to collaborate and share strategies, programs, and best practices for advancing Maryland's economy. And whereas the economic growth and stability of the state affect all regions and jurisdictions of Maryland, and the City of Tacoma Park is an important component of the state's economic success. Now therefore, I, Talisha Cersei, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland, on behalf of the council, staff, and residents, do hereby proclaim the week of October 20th through October the 24th, 2025, as Economic Development Week in Maryland. And so with that, because we do not have any voting items this evening, we're going to move to general public comments. Do we have any general public comments this evening?
Good evening, everyone. Ferd Hefner, 42-year resident of Ward 3, and here tonight on behalf of Presbyterians for Police Transformation. Just wanted to call your attention to a letter we sent to you all yesterday. I hope many of you have had a chance to read it. If you haven't, I hope you can do so soon. We're at a tipping point, as it were, with the project. It's just finally, after a long delay, getting underway. And yet, we only have a year to go with funding. We desperately need the county to step in to keep this program alive as a, on a permanent basis. Our group has been doing a lot. We've met with the county executive. We've met with his staff several times. We've met with the council president and her staff. And we've been attending many of the budget work sessions, or listening sessions, with a real point of trying to get to as many other county council members as possible. And I will say, the discussions so far have been promising, but obviously, nothing's in the bag until it's in the bag. And the budget's going to be, obviously, extremely tight. So we also are very much aware and grateful that city staff have had similar meetings, also positive in nature. And so our plea to you is now it's time for this council to step up and make a formal request, both to the county executive and the county council, as they start solidifying the FY27 budget request. So we just really urge you to do that and also encourage any citizens out there listening on Zoom or in the room that want to be part of the advocacy campaign to come and join us. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other general public comments? Come on down.
How you doing? My name is Bradley Williams. Maple Avenue, where I grew up, my whole life. I'm a former rec employee, you know, as a sports coordinator, team manager, and many other positions. And I worked with the rec from age 14 to about 35 years old. Some of you may know my post where I tagged the city, the mayor, and Tacoma Park native, and governor of Maryland Westmore, pertaining to the cost of the Winter Basketball League. I saw the post for the Winter Basketball League and decided I wanted my son to play where I grew up. And then I looked at the price, which said $100, and my jaw dropped. When I was still here in 2015, the price was $60 for the basketball league. I also posted a Winter Basketball League for Montgomery County Recreation Department, which their league is $40 for the season. To me, it's very insensitive to think parents, especially in this Ward 4 area, can afford to pay $100 per kid to play basketball, especially in these economic times. So I made a post about it, and everyone had, you know, the same sentiments as me. I was a sports coordinator, used to coordinate the whole league. And I understand that $100 is outlandish. At the time I was here, $60 was high to me. So personally, I went to local businesses such as Peter Sub Shop, Mark's Kitchen, House and Musical Traditions, et cetera, et cetera. And I asked them to sponsor teams, which the majority of them did. This helped me to be able to get a good number of low-income kids in the league free without notifying upper management because, to me, they were only focused on revenue and the money that we made. And I would order three extra jerseys for every team so I could get kids in there who couldn't afford it. And later on, I got scolded for it, but really didn't care because it was about the kids. I even went as far as having an ex-NBA player and Tacoma Park native, Steve Francis, to donate $10,000 to the rec, which I plan to use for free programming and, you know, for basketball and stuff. And that money was dispensed elsewhere into the budget. And with that, he vowed to never donate to Tacoma Park ever again. So after my post on Facebook, I was told from a third party that spoke with Gregory Clark that scholarships were available. And I was wondering if that was the case, why wasn't it on the flyer? It's troubling to know that the rec is more interested in making more money than helping the youth who need it with these outlets. But I wasn't surprised because the rec has been failing our kids in Tacoma Park and mainly the Maple Avenue community. When I was young, the rec department was the best place on earth. A guy by the name of Calvin A. Vant ran the rec department, which changed the whole community's life, especially the kids.
Thank you very much. Your time is up.
That's it?
Three minutes, yes.
Okay.
But we did, I just want to say that I did receive your message, and we'll be able to provide a response during council comments.
Okay. I just want to say that, I mean, I understand it's a three-minute timeline on this, but we're speaking about kids here. We're not speaking about a budget. We're not speaking about voting or anything. We're speaking about something that's very important. So it's not a packed place, so I don't understand why I couldn't finish what I'm saying. I just, it's not that much more to go. But it's just something that needs to be taken care of. Like, we've had eight to 10 kids that's walked this hallway who were gunned down and dead and gone because they were exiled from this building for minor infractions. And those kids went out to the streets, and they are all dead now. You went to a funeral, one of them.
Didn't.
Yes, you did. And I praised you for that on there. But the fact that all I get is three minutes to talk about what needs to be done for these kids, and I can't expound on it, says a lot. So that's fine. I understand.
Can I give you two more minutes? We cap at five, but you should let me know ahead of time.
I know.
It's okay. No worries.
This is, this is, well, this is not my first time because I've had to come to a meeting when I was with the rec. And we came to a meeting, and all we talked about was budget. We never talked about the kids. And I won't even, I won't even finish everything that's on here. I'm just going to sum it up. And it's basically that when we were growing up, this was my first, the rec department was my first time going to an NBA game, my first time going to a college game, my first time going to camp. I went to Camp Letts with the police officers. Kirk Gilbert was a former police officer. That's how I met Kirk Gilbert, through the community. And we branched with the police, and we became friends. To this day, he's still my mentor and my friend. And that's from when I was a child. So I want to bring community back to the recreation department because right now, there's no community. These kids are out here, they have nothing to do, they have nowhere to go. And I just want it to be seen. I've, I personally am going to take it upon myself now to reach out to all the people that I, because we have good people in Tacoma Park. We have great people, coaches who helped me out big time. People like Tom Perez, you know, I mean, guys, Jamie Raskin, guys who's helped me out. And we all were like this back then. We were all intertwined. Whether you lived up on Tulip Avenue or you lived on Maple Avenue, we were all intertwined. You talked about Halloween. We used to volunteer and be characters at the haunted house. Like, we didn't get paid for none of this stuff. We used to shovel, shovel snow in Tacoma Park, rake leaves in Tacoma Park, give out newsletters in Tacoma Park. We did anything. That was all the stuff that we did. And it's just, I feel like it needs to be brought back. And I'm going to take it upon myself with whatever I got to do to make sure that comes back because I'm tired of seeing these kids die, and I'm tired of seeing things like this happen. There's a guy named Calvin A. Vant who saved my life and all of our lives. That's the reason why we have people like Steve Francis, NBA. We have people like David Van De Poel, who coaches for the Washington Wizards. We have people like me. I'm now in the TV. I'm a TV producer. That's what I do. And that came from the rec department. And I just want to see that brought back to the rec department. That's it.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you, Kirk. I love you.
Do we have any other general public comments this evening? Come on down.
Arthur David Olson, Herbie Hancock Avenue. Ward 4. A budget idea that doesn't involve staff cuts. If you head down Sycamore Avenue from the junction, near Elm Avenue, you'll see a warning sign with the text, "Slow Dangerous Intersection." Now, the best thing to do with a dangerous intersection is to either make it safe or close it to vehicles. But a sign could make sense as a temporary measure if, for example, time was needed to do engineering or secure funding. These days, we can use Street View to find out how long a sign has been in place. In this case, the sign has been there since at least September of 2007, which is as far back as Street View goes for Tacoma Park. As Board of Election members will tell you, the sign is old enough to vote in both city and state elections. An intersection that's been dangerous for 18 years is not a problem with the city's diligent, hard-working, dedicated Public Works Department. It's a problem with city councils that have hideously overburdened public works that has led to years-long backlogs of non-urgent work on multiple problems: missing signs, misoriented signs, misinformative signs, misformatted signs, mangled signs, out-of-date signs, buckled locks, temporarily patched locks, streetlights that run all day, streetlights with missing fixtures, streetlights, excuse me, dead streetlights, destroyed streetlights, and yes, dangerous intersections. I know of more than 100 such matters. I'm sure the public works staff knows of more. What to do? I'll suggest giving public works a Jubilee Year in which they are not asked to take on any new projects. This will give public works a chance to catch their breath and reduce or eliminate their backlog of work. Such a Jubilee Year won't reduce long-term expenses. The new work will eventually get done and paid for. But a Jubilee Year will give the council and city staff time to find the alternative revenue sources so often cited as the way out of the city's financial woes. Now's the time for a council budget resolution calling for no new public works projects in fiscal year 2027. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other general public comments this evening? Okay. Do we have any virtual public comments this evening?
Okay. All right. So we are going to move to our presentations this evening. The first item is the Council Compensation Committee interim report.
Good evening, all. I should have worn heels.
No worries. Can we get the mic taken down?
Here, I got it.
Perfect. There you go.
The presentation. Okay. I haven't memorized it.
Good evening. My name is Franca Roefay, and I'm a resident of Ward 2. And I'm here with the Council Compensation Committee. And, yeah. There's a way to get rid of that echo. Some technical difficulties. Thank you. There's nothing worse than my voice, hearing my own voice. And we're here to make recommendations to the city on mayor and council compensation. to make recommendations to the city on mayor and council compensation. I will go over what's in this report and then just briefly go over the charter and then hand it over to my compensation committee members to introduce themselves. So what's in this report? As I mentioned, the Compensation Committee Charter, the committee composition and work schedule, and then the data connection, collection and analysis, which includes the current financial compensation, the council and city demographics, the council time commitment survey. The resident survey is not yet available. It closed yesterday and we're in the process of reviewing the information. And the municipality comparison, and then our initial compensation committee recommendations, and then we'll open it up to questions. So just briefly to go over the Compensation Committee Charter, in 2020, the city council adopted a revised set of principles to guide the future compensation committee. And they stated that the purpose of compensation is to provide the mayor and council members with salary and non-salary benefits, which, well, to pay them for the work they do, but also promote a more equitable incentive and opportunity for residents to run for elected office. And they would apply the following principles. And the first principle is that the city of Tacoma Park is committed to fair and equitable administration of total compensation. Compensation would be balanced between the financial condition of the city and the service and stewardship provided by the mayor and council. And then in recognition of the high-quality, community-centered services by the council, the city would strive to maintain a compensation structure that is fair and reasonable, which need not be comparable with municipalities of similar size. In order to recognize the increased responsibility of the mayor, the mayor's salary shall be greater than the council. And then the fifth principle is council compensation. Information shall be transparent and easily accessible, and that these principles and compensation would be reevaluated at least every four years. The committee met on a weekly basis. And in addition to that, the committee did some research and analysis on their own time. So a big thank you to the committee for all the work they put in there. And before I hand it over to the committee to introduce themselves, I really wanted to give Jesse Carpenter, the city clerk, a big thank you for attending all of our meetings and responding to the multitude of requests that we presented. So I'll hand it over to the council, the committee, to introduce themselves.
I'm Nancy Kluge and I'm Ward Five. And I'm going to be talking to you about some of the comparison that we did with other municipalities.
And Alison Bell-Meier could not make it tonight. She's from Ward Two. And Yofta Wardofa is not here, and he was from Ward Four. So just to dig right into the data collection and analysis, the current financial compensation of the council is the mayor's salary is $34,108, the council's salary is $25,582. All council members are eligible to participate in the city's health insurance plan. The city pays 100% of the individual, of the premiums for individual coverage. And dependents are eligible to participate in the health insurance plan, which is partially subsidized by the city. Council are also eligible to participate in the dependent care flexible spending account, which is a pre-tax benefit that allows council members to set aside a portion of their salary for qualifying dependent care. This is, you know, to be clear, this is not additional income. This is just a pre-tax benefit. The council is also eligible to participate in the 457 retirement plan that's available to other city employees, but they do not receive the match. The cost for salary and benefits for 2025, fiscal year 2025, salaries were $190,000, benefits $75,000, for a total cost of $265,480. This represents a little over half a percent of the total city budget. The budget allocated for fiscal year 2026, the salaries are $187,777, benefits at $81,806. The total budget is $269,583. And again, this is just a little over half a percent of the total city budget. So we thought it would be really important to look at the mayor and council demographics, the trends over the years. To give you some background, in 2020, the previous compensation committee recommended, and the council approved, a substantial increase in salary for the mayor and council. This was part of a larger effort to attract candidates who more fully represent Tacoma Park's diverse demographics and socioeconomic makeup. It was felt that having elected officials who more fully represent the broad diversity of the community would foster more inclusive decision-making, build public trust, and help to produce policies and priorities that address the needs and perspectives of all residents. And so as you can see from the data, we looked back to 2011. When we have made some progress in racial diversity, we seem to be very consistent on renters. And I think the biggest change has been in gender diversity. And then we also thought it would be important to compare the current council to the city demographics. And as you can see, while we've made improvements in gender diversity, I think greater efforts need to be made in other, in other areas such as renters and racial diversity. And now I'm going to hand it over to Kim, who will go over the activity survey.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'm Kim Martin, Ward Three, and I am here to chat a bit with you about the survey that you completed about hours worked and how you spend your time as a council member. The previous councils in 2007 and 2015 also submitted a survey to council members to assess the number of hours that were spent weekly. And in 2007, in 2007, it was about 15 hours per week. In 2015, it jumped to about 25 hours per week. And in the survey that was done this year, it dropped just slightly, a little bit. The average was about 24 hours per week. The activities that seemed to take the greatest amount of time were attending meetings and preparing for meetings, and also communicating with constituents. Now, this particular slide represents something that I'm going to bring up a little bit later, which is in one of our recommendations. But it seemed that the majority of the time was spent with communicating with constituents, but also attending community events and engaging with staff and officials also seemed to be quite a bit of a time-bearing issue. The mean was 24 hours. From your self-reported data, the median was 27.5. With a range, this is the part that I thought was the most interesting. The range was 14 to 39 hours per week. Some, there were a couple who reported only 14 to 17 hours per week, while someone else reported 39 hours a week, almost 40 hours, like almost a full-time job. So there was great variability on the time of year. There was, if you remember, in the survey, there was a place where you could like respond and give an open-ended response. And I learned that some of the variability was like, you know, there are certain weeks and certain months where the job is just going to be pretty intense, and then others where it might be significantly less so. So coming to an exact understanding of, you know, full-time versus part-time employment was presented a challenge based on this survey. Some of the themes from the survey, that the workload has increased over the last 10 years pretty steadily, that sometimes the work of being a council member conflicts with full-time responsibilities, and a few of you have reported having to use vacation leave or leave from your full-time employment in order to get council responsibilities completed, that there were some out-of-pocket expenses, mostly related to childcare, that at times the compensation seems insufficient because it does feel more like a full-time job, especially because if it's not with a retirement income, not also included with a retirement income. Childcare and health benefits seemed to be important to you and that that would be the crucial lever to increase diversity. And then this was the thing that I mentioned earlier, that there were many requests among you for staff or tech support with communicating with constituents, some of those responsibilities that I talked about earlier that took a lot of time. There was a particular understanding from the survey that if there was some tech support, that those responsibilities might be less, that might require less time if there was some support with that. The final thing is that we did, as my friend Franca mentioned, we did have a community survey. We got 39 responses to the community survey. We just got those results on Monday, so we haven't been able to really analyze those fully yet. But we did have, the one thing that I can share is that 59% of the people agreed with the recommendations that we're going to be sharing with you in just a moment. I am now going to invite my friend Nancy to the podium.
All right. There we go. Okay. So while the committee charter says that we don't have to compare to municipalities of similar size, we thought it might be a good idea to do that. So this slide shows you, mostly we picked them in terms of population. You'll see at the top there, Gaithersburg, Rockville, Bowie, significantly higher populations than the other towns that we picked that are fairly similar to Tacoma Park in size. We picked those three simply because they are nearby and they might be, give us some additional data. Other way. Other way. Okay, where do we, where do we want to go? There, arrows. Lovely. Okay, that'll work. All right. So this was for the cities that were fairly comparable to us in size. We tried to compare in terms of some of the same demographics that we were comparing in terms of citizens of Tacoma Park and the council members, gender, age, race. Threw in some additional demographics that we thought might influence your workloads. You know, for example, if there are cities with high populations that are non-citizens or non-US-born, they might require more help in navigating the systems. If the income is fairly comparable or not as comparable, you might end up having to deal with more people than might deal with income issues or poverty issues or unemployment issues. So we threw some of those in. One of the big areas where we saw there's a big difference, that we don't have nearly as much representation on the council, is for renters. I think that's probably pretty understandable. So we also pulled some data on housing types and the cost of housing. The darker areas indicate the cities that are fairly similar to Tacoma Park in terms of that particular demographic. There's no one city that is, oh, it's a complete model of what Tacoma Park has in terms of these demographics. But there was enough overlap that we thought these are probably pretty good cities to use as comparison cities. And so what we then, one more bit of data before we do the actual salary piece, we realized that people in Tacoma Park are very vocal, very active, sometimes in really good ways, probably sometimes in not-so-good ways. There's no one really good demographic that allows you to get a handle on that, but we realized that probably is a major piece of your workload, a very involved citizenry is going to call you up more often, they're going to want more of your time. About the closest we could get to that, that might indicate it was voter turnout or how active are people. And you will see that Tacoma Park has got about a 49% voter turnout, which is dramatically higher than any other city, big, small, anything around us. So it might indicate that, yes, people are out there and they're politically active in Tacoma Park. I think the bottom figure is probably the one that's the most telling. You guys don't make comparable salaries to Gaithersburg, Rockville, and Bowie, but you probably knew that. I think what was surprising to us is that in terms of all of the other similar-sized, pretty comparable sorts of towns in Montgomery County, our mayor and city council members actually make significantly more than do their mayors and city council members. So it was a surprising bit of data for us. I think the line graph shows that really well, but then the table shows the minimum, maximum, and median salary there. And we are definitely outside of the range. All right.
Okay, I'm just going to do the first bullet point here. And apologies, it should really read salary and benefits. But we're not currently recommending any changes to salary and benefits, although these are initial recommendations because, as Kim said, we haven't received, we haven't completely reviewed the resident survey. So no changes are currently recommended. However, annual adjustments tied to the employment cost index should continue. I think this has been in place for quite some time, and this will ensure that salaries keep pace with cost of living changes. And some of the considerations we had is we didn't feel that there was enough time to see the intended results from the 2020 increase. And it was too early to draw any conclusions based on just one election cycle. And as we all know, systemic change often takes time and sustained effort. And one of the goals of the 2020 increase was to remove the barrier of compensation that may discourage underrepresented residents from running for office. And we felt that the intent remains valid, and we're committed to building on the foundation through expanded outreach and education, which we'll go over some recommendations there in just a moment. And then we considered the resident engagement, as Nancy mentioned, and the council member workload that Kim reviewed. And we felt the council members here play an active, highly visible role in community engagement and constituent service, and we felt responsibility supported a more equitable compensation level. And then rather than making any changes at this time, our focus is really on broadening participation by ensuring that potential candidates are aware of the opportunity to run and feel supported in the process. And future council, we recommend that future council members continue to monitor the demographics and evaluate the effectiveness of these efforts over future election cycles. And now I'm going to hand it over to Peter, who, if you all know, was a former council member himself.
Hi, everybody. Fun to be on this side of the dais, at least until the questions start. Some of the folks on the, yeah, some of the folks on the council will recall that when this came up the last time, several of us, and I was one of them, suggested that what at that time was around $11,000 and $14,000 for the council and the mayor really did potentially constitute a barrier to broader participation on the part of the residents and citizenry here in the community. In particular, if you can imagine a single parent or somebody who's not well compensated, that would be quite difficult. And I think there's been plenty of change on the council. I'm delighted to see the gender changes. When I first got on the council, there was only one woman at that time, in fact, our mayor then, Kate Stewart. But I think more could be done in terms in particular of the renter piece that was cited by my colleagues. So as Franca just mentioned, we're not at this point on an interim basis, what we're doing today, recommending further increases in salary. But we do think there are other steps that can be taken to help potentially broaden or stimulate interest in running more widely. And so the next two pages of the presentation, and that'll be the wrap-up of the presentation, focus on that. And there are three main categories, which is inclusive communication, outreach generally to the community. That's number one. The second is engagement and candidate support. So when people are running or when they announce that they plan to run. And then the third is support that can be provided to council members once they're elected. And so several of the recommendations that we have cut across that, so I'm probably not going to say them in exactly the order they appear on the page, and my colleagues will know. I often did stuff like that anyway, but let me, let me just get into it. So in terms of inclusive communication and outreach generally, and, you know, we had experiences when we had elections, there was an outdoor early voting session and we had people come up to us. It was an outdoor, kind of in a park setting along Sligo Creek. And there were people doing a cookout, but there was also legit voting. Jesse was there and other people were there doing the voting. And people would walk up and say, oh, what's going on? It's an election. I didn't know it was an election. I didn't know it was an election. And it turned out, they lived in Tacoma Park, they didn't know they lived in Tacoma Park, they didn't know if they did that they could vote, and they didn't know even in some cases then they were non-citizens who certainly would have been eligible to even vote and could have registered that day to vote. And so it's easy for those of us who are here to imagine, everybody knows what it's all about, but I think the reality is that they often don't. And that's one of the reasons why we need to try to broaden the inclusivity of communication outreach generally within the city. And that, it happens already, I'm not saying we don't do it, but I think there are ways to do it more. So one thing I would highlight is more in terms of translation. The newsletter has information on how to find translated articles, as does the website, but I think those things could be more forward and more featured prominently, maybe back on the front page of the newsletter, how to get the translations, and maybe something's popping on the landing page of the website, as opposed to having to then click on and go. Because just realistically, people may not, if their main language is something other than English, do that. So that's something, we are doing it, but I think we could do more of it. Secondly, we could have translations of the council agenda items at the meeting. So when you come in here, I pulled my little thing out of the box over there, and it's all in English. So maybe we could have some printouts there for people who don't speak English. Third, and this gets really complicated, but expanding outreach to underrepresented communities in general, and I know the mayor mentioned one of the upcoming agenda items is the community connectors. And that's, I see Councilmember DeBala nodding. That's been something that we grappled with a lot and could never exactly figure out how best to do it. But I think that's a crucial part of this, and that could help get past that thing I mentioned of people not necessarily even knowing that they could vote and that they lived in the city. And then one of the things, just in the broader piece of this, would be, I think we do a couple of times a year, we did when I was on the council, I think we still do, have council meetings in alternate locations in here. And all of these things I'm talking about do have a cost, some of them minimal, some of them a little bit more expensive. So that's something for the council to weigh. But we were talking and thinking about whether we could, in addition to once or twice a year going, having the council meet in the rec center on New Hampshire Avenue, maybe finding one or two other locations where we could do that, just to sort of signal to the community that that outreach makes sense. Now, I understand, and the guys in the back who do the technology are probably frowning when I say that. It's a lot of work, so maybe it doesn't work, but it's something that should at least be on the table. Then, when we get to support of candidates, this is something that has been done in the past, I think it could be expanded, having meetings for people early in the election years when, and I believe Jesse Carpenter did do one of these, but have it on Zoom, have maybe a couple off-site locations where it could be explained to people who are interested in running, what's actually involved, what you have to do, how, do you have to get a federal ID number to have a bank account where you could accept money? All these kinds of things, which a lot of people wouldn't know. And I don't think it would be proper or appropriate to have current council members speaking at that necessarily, but as, speaking as a former council member, I'd be happy to help provide that type of information. And I think, once candidates officially declare that they're running, which might happen over the summer or early fall in an election year, then maybe there could be one or two sessions for candidates on the city budget, on ethics, and some of the jurisdictional issues around who handles permits and those kinds of things. Because I'll confess now that I didn't fully understand those things when I first ran. And, you know, it's hard to know that stuff, and I think there's a sort of minimum level that it would be helpful to be able to give. So if you imagine someone sitting there thinking, should I run? How could I run? I don't know anything about it. Well, maybe here's a way that they could, they could learn about it. And I would also add that one of the things we talked about was, maybe there could be a group meeting for those who declared they're running with the city manager or with department heads at some point, not separate meetings for each of them, but declared candidates would get to do that. So I think those things could help when people are candidates. And then the last category is for those who are, once you're elected. So I can imagine a lot of people thinking to themselves, well, I'd like to run, but what would I do when I got there? How would I communicate with my constituents? I don't have the technology to do that. What am I going to do with my kids? How am I going to even get a chance to let the people I'm representing know what I'm doing? And so a few final thoughts on that, and then I'll, then I'll, we'll close out the presentation. Number one, I've talked to a few of the current members of the council about this, it's hard to figure out that communication piece. There's no exact way to do it. You can use your campaign fund, but then that's sort of like a political thing, some of us do that. You can do a separate blog, the way I did, but I had to pay for it myself, that's not really covered within the city budget. And if you want to communicate with your constituents, how should you really do it? So I think one thing, and I don't think this would cost that much, would be to, we talked about this on the committee, would be to have a, sort of a standard template for the newsletters that people could be, could use once they got elected. And if they knew they would have that, maybe that would make them feel a little bit more comfortable with it. Having all council communications easily archived and searchable on the city website. I don't mean individual emails and texts, but all the major stuff that we do. When you become a council member, one of the things that it often makes sense to do is contact your local listservs, the neighborhood email list within your ward that you represent, and maybe try to get on that. Well, some of them have restrictions on that, some of them don't, but it's a little bit of actually of a fraught process. And so maybe there could be a standard city letter that you could use to introduce yourself and say, here I am, I've been elected, would you please let me on? Now, they don't have to, they have their own rules, but I think that could help just in terms of making people feel comfortable. And then the last two things, just to highlight, and this is more about the family impact, for council meetings and late-night events, ride-hailing vouchers of some kind. I know my colleagues used to carpool and so on, but as I was thinking about this, just on the way over here, I live a few blocks away, and so I would just walk over sometimes if my car was being used by someone else in the family. And being a dumb or overconfident male, I would walk home even in the dark, but really, that's not what should be happening. And I can imagine someone thinking about running, and, wait, I gotta find my way over from New Hampshire Avenue over there in the dark, you know, how am I going to do that? Well, maybe a ride-hailing voucher would work. And then the last thing is, and again, there'd be a bigger cost to this, but something to consider, on evenings when there are meetings, have some sort of childcare option, maybe for the first two hours, not till midnight when we're debating, you know, Tacoma Junction, but maybe for the first couple hours, just as that transition, because that 7:30 time when you've got little kids, I mean, I ran only when my kids were grown up and they didn't, they didn't care about what I was doing. But if you have younger kids, that's a time when it's often the most fraught. So if there was a way to come over here and there was a small spot where a handful of kids could be, and someone else from the family could scoop them up by nine o'clock or whatever it would be, I just think that would be also something that we talked about that could help make the process a little more family-friendly. So all these things, like I said, don't come free, and the council can kick around, the extent to which they think that they are budgetarily wise. But I don't think if we were starting out brand new, we would say, well, let's set up this government, and let's set it up in a way that really makes it hard for single parents, or renters, or people who don't speak English well, let's just make it harder for them to be on the council. No one would ever say that. So I think that's the category of things that we're talking about here. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Wonderful.
Thank you all, and now we'll open it up to questions.
Great. Well, first, I just want to say thank you all very much. The level of rigor that you all took to this project was just really, really helpful. It was, it was very clear and very thoughtful, so I appreciate all of the hard work that you all have put in. One question, just to kind of kick us off. In terms of some of the data that you looked at in comparing jurisdictions, did you look at services at all? Because I know a point was raised about Montgomery County and comparing us with other jurisdictions within Montgomery County. First of all, I agree with many of your recommendations. But the, one of the big things that Tacoma Park often deals with is the fact that the services that we provide versus what some other smaller municipalities provide in the county are different. So like, we have a police department, the level of public works that we provide, and things like that. Was that something that you all talked about?
We did discuss that. We didn't actually go in and look at other cities. I think we would need a lot more time. But we did discuss, and that's why we included Bowie, 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 Gaithersburg, College Park, and I think those are the top ones. That was the reason we included those. And that's why, in some ways, we're supporting a more equitable level of compensation, because the scope of responsibilities are more in line with the bigger municipalities.
Great, thank you. And one other thing, well, a couple other things, just in terms of communications. I know, and I appreciate you all recognizing the difficulties as it relates to communicating to our residents directly. I will say, it is very difficult, particularly in the role of mayor, to get emails from every single listserv in this city. But I do wonder whether or not you all thought about offering or allowing council members to get some sort of stipend for whatever technologies that they may acquire to allow for them to do that communication. I mean, one of the things, I subscribe to MailChimp, I just need a clone to make sure I'm able to create my blogs the way I want. But it is something that I pay for monthly out of pocket. Is that something that you all talked about in terms of a stipend to allow for council members to acquire those types of technologies? Or is it something that you are maybe suggesting that city staff invest in a platform and provide council members with training and access to those platforms?
Peter, do you want to take that? No, no, you can.
That's sort of what I touched on previously, with the idea of having a standard template, partly because it would get really difficult to sort of say for, you know, for Rob and others, well, we'll pay for Talisha's thing on, you know, Zephy and Kovar's thing on Squarespace and DeBala's thing on, you know, MailChimp and all that. And so one option would be to say everybody would get the same thing, but you could, you could add to that and say, or if they don't want the same thing, they could receive this modest dollar amount to help cover that. But that could at least make it more equitable. I'm not sure if that.
No, that totally answered my question, because that would actually perhaps help some council members where, if there's like an organization license for some sort of platform, and folks are trained and given a template, if you want to change orange to blue, go right ahead, but everybody has a template in terms of how they can get started. And so then that way, everyone will be trained and have access to the technology to create their newsletters the way that they want, but it's, it's not that everyone is starting from scratch. That makes sense.
And one other thing that I think I forgot to mention, I don't know if it's on there, but maybe you could offer each council member, you know, twice a year or whatever, a chance to just have their blog, an article that they wrote or a column appear on the city website, you know, not do it in the three to six months before the election, but just, you know, why not let the whole city know what each of them is working on? And the complication there, of course, would be that could get very political, and then some staff would have to vet it. But that's another piece of letting people know they would have that communication option. I just neglected to mention.
Yeah, and one thing, just when I saw that, I got a little nervous, just because, you know, people, there's a lot of liberty that you could take when you are doing your blog the way that you want, you can do what you want. And so I get a little hesitant with conflating the two. Now, we have a mechanism for council members, depending on the topic and, you know, things to have vetted blogs, but there could be a way, and I think there are some council members that may be doing this, where if you have an ability for someone to subscribe to your listserv blurb, that could be something on a council member's page. So if someone wants to subscribe, again, this kind of goes into this grand plan for world domination of streamlining communications. So if you have something like MailChimp, where everybody has a template, everyone has been educated, you have your own license, you now have a link that you can put on the city website, under your name and your photo and your bio, and then people can subscribe to your listservs, and they would get them automatically as long as they subscribe, as long as everybody is taught how to do that and how to set something like that up, because it can take time to do if you're not technologically savvy.
And the challenge would be, if somebody did something that was seen as being overtly political in a period right before the election, and it was on technology paid for by the city, as opposed to paid for by themselves.
Right.
That could get awkward.
Exactly.
So that would be a.
That would be another thing. Nope, that's a very good point.
There would have to be guidelines.
Yes.
Guidelines for this, and is your technology.
So that would basically, okay, I just want to repeat, because I know there was some issues with tech because of the height difference. But the fact that there would have to be rules, and that's, it's an excellent point that you all have brought up, and I appreciate that, that, you know, city-owned property should not be used for political purposes. And so you don't want those newsletters to ultimately become political fodder, because then that would basically mean that the city is sponsoring someone's campaigning. That makes sense. Councilmember Hanzak.
Thank you so much. I'm really delighted to hear from all you, and so appreciate all the work that you've put into this. I still feel like a newer council member in my second year, so I feel, I feel like it was all new for me after living here for so many years. And I'm very appreciative of the work that happened before I got on council, because I understand, I'm always reminding people, you know that my predecessors all made like half of what we make, even if we don't think it's enough. And so in that vein, I know that people have heard me share, but I'll go ahead and start with this, so I don't sound, so I don't sound too cynical here. But, you know, I will, I will be the first to admit that it's been very, very hard at this price point that we are paid in compensation, even though I am grateful, and it was at least part of something that changed my mind from previously having considered this, you know, 15 years prior, and I, there was no way that I could do that with a new baby. But I can tell you now, there is no way that I can continue to do this. And I'm a mother of three, I'm well-established in my career, but it is so far off from where I would need to be to make it possible for my family. And that's not just because of the times. So, and probably that came through on my survey, so I'm starting from that point, and looking at equity issues and some of the data that you've brought to bear. So I'm just going to lay out some of the questions that I had as I went through. One, so, and if you'll, let me list them, and then just decide which ones you want to answer, and maybe we can do some later. If compensation were to be brought more in line with what I think the demands of the job are, as you have laid out, does the committee think we might get a council that's more demographically aligned with our city's demographics? And that is my presumption, I'm coming in with the assumption that it's not more in line with the demands of the job. Second, have you actually calculated the per-hour rate since you showed us the mean and the median? Because I just did a quick back-of-the-envelope one, just now, having heard you and not just read your packet, and it's about minimum wage or less. We don't even pay our interns that rate, just saying. Why the high disparity? It is actually, when I talk to my residents that are renters, that are people of even lesser means than I have been growing up, it is a total impediment. They ask me, what is the realistic demand of the job? And then I tell them the reality, and I say, you could work less than that, but it'll be hard. And, and they say, but I make so much more than that now, why, I couldn't live in this city. So that, I struggle with that when I look at your numbers and equity. And I appreciate the recommendations you've made to ease responsibility. I would, I would invite you to maybe do some qualitative interviews with different council members who seem to buck some of the norms of the past, and ask them what have been some of their enablers, and what more could they imagine? Because I think some of them, like, for. Because I think some of them, like, for example, the childcare is a well-intentioned idea. Realistically, I think there might be better ways to achieve the same objective because two hours of childcare here for most people isn't really going to help them on a regular basis. On a regular basis, somehow you're going to, you know, you might need a different kind of help with that for dinner and homework and every single week trying to make things work. And then, I'm also wondering about the resident survey that was distributed. I'm sorry if I missed a beat, but I didn't see that come out, which means that it may not have hit my Ward Five residents, which means that their inputs wouldn't be part of your resident survey, and that concerns me. And I apologize if I missed a beat, it is very much possible. But that means maybe you have used some standard form of communication that I didn't read, or I didn't hear something last week. And then finally, you said sometimes folks said it conflicted with their full-time employment. I am surprised to hear that. First of all, there aren't many folks that have been on council that are full-time employed, and I think it would bear noting how many there have been. And secondly, that's not what I've seen. I've seen and heard from some of our longer-standing leaders that they've actually had to give up that full-time employment in order to continue in service. Thank you.
Okay, well, I'm not sure I have answers for all of these, but if compensation were more in line with the demands of the job, would we get a more diverse council? That's, I think, right now, you know, we've increased the compensation, and we haven't really seen much change. And I think it's going to take a few election cycles. Now, if we increased it significantly more, maybe, but I think it would have to be coupled with a lot of the things that Peter was talking about. We really need to do the education, how do you run for office, and make it easier for people to run for office. Have we calculated the per-hour rate? We did it based on, I did it actually, back-of-the-envelope for, based on a 24-hour, the average. And for the council, it's about, it's about $20 per hour, and for mayor, it's about 28. I was not surprised as Nancy was in the compensation. I was actually surprised at how low some other municipalities pay, who pay below the minimum wage for Maryland. And is there a disparity in the realistic demand of the, and, yeah, probably. I mean, it sounds to me like, you know, we say people are working part-time, but for, in reality, parts of the year, you're actually working full-time, right? So absolutely, we're probably not really portraying that. And maybe, you know, Peter can speak to that better. And I take your point on qualitative interviews, you know, maybe the childcare, you know, having someone, you know, childcare for two hours may not really solve the problem for people with children. Maybe something else like a stipend for childcare, maybe we need to discuss that more. The resident survey, I'm not sure, each council member was supposed to send it out to their wards, so I think Jessie will probably look into that. And then, on the last, oh, it was on the website. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, that's right, I forgot. Yeah, it was on the website, so maybe, you know, we could open it up again.
Can I ask a quick question? When does the survey close? I just want to say, because there's a few surveys that are open right now on the city website, and if we're not pushing it, it will likely not be amplified, right?
It has closed, but we could reopen it.
We can reopen it, and if you want to tell your, you know, if you have your listserv and you want to tell your residents. And then, I'm not sure about the "sometimes it conflicted with the full-time employment." I'm not sure on the activity survey, you know, that we have to look into more. So would any of you like to?
I think I might have, I think you might have misunderstood what I was saying. What I was saying is that in the survey, it said, people who said that they had full-time employment had to use vacation time in order to get their council responsibilities completed, that their full-time employment was actually conflicting with their council duties. Does that make sense?
And I will just share personally, I'm one of those people. So in order for me to do things like go to NLC, go to MML, do a closed session in the middle of a Thursday, I am ethically required to do that on my personal time. So that means I have to submit leave every time I am doing work, that is during normal business hours where, you know, so I have to, I have to put in leave. And so like, for me, that can range from, depending on the year, especially as mayor, that can range from 180 to 100 hours worth of leave that I have to use. Because if you think about all the different conferences and events, like, those are full workdays, and so that and meetings, so that.
And it wasn't just one comment, there were several, you know, in the open-ended comments, there were several council members. I don't know who said what because it's blind to me. But there were just people that were commenting saying, you know, "I had to take a day here, or I had to do this," or "I have to use, you know, many hours of vacation time in order to get my council response, or personal leave to get my council responsibilities done."
Yeah, everybody knows our work. But, yeah, that is a, for many folks who are not just limited to folks that are in council now, but council members in the future, even though our meetings are in the evenings, a lot of work activities may be required during nine to five, Monday through Friday. And so because of that, anyone who has full-time employment has to take time off in order to do those activities.
Any other questions?
Councilmember Landman.
Yeah, apropos of that point that you're just making, and that also has repercussions for other members of the council who fill in for the daytime activities that the other folks who have full-time jobs cannot do. And we consider that appropriate, but it does have trickle-down effect as well. I had a couple of quick questions. One of them that's just very quick, when you were looking at the, comparing the work of this council to the other jurisdictions, do all of those meet year-round, or do some of them have sort of part-time functions the way that, like, the state legislature does? Do you happen to know, is that something that you were able to ask?
I think we determined that they all work part-time, is that what you mean?
I meant, do they meet year-round or do some?
Oh, meet year-round. Oh, no, I have no idea. That's not something we looked into, but that is something we can, I assume Tacoma Park meets year-round.
Could, I'm sorry, could you get closer to my?
Oh, sure, I'm sorry, yeah. No, it's not something we looked at, but it is something we can look into for the final report. I assume that Tacoma Park meets year-round, yeah.
I mean, we have vacation time off, but, I mean, in Annapolis, they, they're not there all year. Feels like during this session, but, yeah. I had a couple of questions. This is one I was just chatting with you about before we began, but I'll bring it up here for benefit of my colleagues. And this was the issue of the health benefit, which is quite a significant portion of the benefit that members of the council receive, which is that if you don't use the 100% benefit for yourself and then the partial benefit for your family, that members of the staff, of the full-time employees of the city, if they don't use that benefit, they get reimbursed into their paycheck for the equivalent of it or a portion of that. But that's not something that the city council does. Although, at least I thought we did because they accidentally gave us a form to fill out when we first got hired that suggested that we'd fill that out and then we would get that reimbursement. So I had asked you guys whether that was something that you had evaluated as a potential element of compensation for the council? Because some members of the council do receive that benefit and others do not. And yet, the people that don't, that's a lost income to them if they're paying for health insurance out of pocket. And so, I wonder if you could comment on that.
We did discuss that, and from what I understand, and maybe I'll have to get more clarification afterwards, but from what I understand, it's the premium for the lowest level of coverage, and it goes into the 457 retirement plan, and it is, it's about $10,000 a year. It's not something that you can then go and use for childcare, it goes into the retirement plan. So we will continue, we did discuss that. We tossed around whether it was something that we would offer, you know, there were, there was a lot of back and forth on whether, you know, you're not employees of the city, and should you get the same benefits as the city? So, but we can have further discussion about that and put it in our final report.
I would appreciate that. And then, there was something else that came up that this kind of is a little bit outside of the purview of what you were talking about, I think. But it's something that I think merits thinking about as a city, and that is the issue of how employee, or how elected officials are part of the pension plan of the state employee's pension plan, whether you want to or not as an elected official, and whether that's appropriate because it provides an incentive to keep running for office because you don't vest until you've been in the pension plan for five years. And so, what if, no, I think it's five, no, 10? So is that something that came up in your conversations?
No, no, but we'll discuss it later.
Okay. I just want to ask the city clerk, because we're now going back and forth, like, "I thought it was five," but I'm like, "No, I think it's like eight." It's a long time before you are vested in the pension.
It's 10 years, but let me clarify, that will no longer be a requirement. That was, they have now changed, the state retirement and pension system has now changed its tune and said, "No, elected officials do not need to contribute to that." Now, you're stuck, apparently, because you were told, many of you were told you had to do that, but future councils will not have to participate. Yeah, you get your money back, but eventually.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, because I served seven years, I didn't really know about it one way or the other. And then after I retired, I got this thing saying, "Pension, what pension?" And I could just, I just got a check back for some portion, maybe not all of it. So I had never vested after seven years, but I think I was close to being made whole. But that's really not a meaningful thing to have, so.
I think we need to get more information on the plan and whether you actually have to be in office for it to vest, or whether it vests after a period of time. There's still a lot of things that we're unsure about. But, you know, I think as Jessie mentioned, it's no longer a requirement.
Thank you very much.
Never mind.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Dibala.
Yeah, thank you so much for doing this and for doing all the background work, the demographics and the comparatives. That was all really interesting to the point of comparisons. Were you able to access the information from the previous compensation committees here? Yeah, so you were able to look at what folks said about how much they work and all of that kind of stuff? Okay, great. To full-time jobs, to the point of full-time jobs, so it would be interesting to look back, my sense, having been on the council for a while, is that most folks don't have another full-time job. And that might be an interesting thing to look at. So you don't even get out of the gate if you have a full-time job. You don't even start thinking about council in many cases. So that's just something that maybe you won't want to look at, look back historically. Except, of course, for Roger. Sorry, I didn't mean to insult you, you or you. So, yeah, it's a compliment to your stamina. I don't have that kind of stamina. So another thing I was really interested in was the range because my recollection in the previous council compensation committee is that the range wasn't nearly that big. And so I'm wondering if, in the tasks people, council members report, if there's one area that some folks feel is, I wouldn't want to say optional, maybe they just ran out of time, but I'd be interested in that. Like, did everybody show up for meetings, of course, and work with their constituents, but maybe they didn't do a newsletter, or maybe they didn't join a committee or go to a state meeting, or I'm just curious how that breaks out for the range there. Couple of minor points that jumped out at me. And then, then I want to bring up two bigger issues that you've touched on but haven't really addressed. So just, I think people already said this, but on your recommendation for getting emails, did you mean listserves? Because as far as I know, there is no way to get individual emails for all the residents in my ward. And if there were, I would love to have somebody.
Yeah, sign up for the listserv, yeah.
Yeah, so you might want to check the wording on that. And then I also, the word vetted.
That was my mistake.
I wondered about that, because I wondered, among other things, about the staff time, that some of this, these are great ideas, and their staff's going to have to do them. And we don't have a lot of staff. We're going to hear from the election board that we don't have a lot of staff in the same area. So that's something we might have to face, but I'd like to get your views on that. So the two bigger ones are the question of a full-time mayor and the question of four-year terms, and whether you looked at either of these in terms of whether they help or hinder. I loved your focus on outreach, communication, get more people involved. And so do either, do those two things, do they help or hurt? If you feel that's part of your chart. Not for you to answer that now unless you've had a long discussion about it already. But those are two bigger changes that, again, may help, may hurt.
One thing that we did discuss in relation to time was that because of the two-year limit for council members, that it seemed, and I think councilmember Hanzak was kind of saying this, that she's in her second year, and being, having only two-year terms means that you're always kind of at the beginning of learning the job. And that's part of the reason why I think council members are saying the job takes 25, 35 hours, is because there's always this kind of startup of learning how to do it, and learning all the listserves, and learning all the language. And I'm sure there's a whole council language with your own little kind of metaphors and things that you all use, you know, that you have to get used to. And so, I don't think it's in our purview to talk about two years versus four years for the mayor because we're the compensation committee. There's probably another committee that does that. But we did bring that up in the sense of how much time it takes when there's a two-year term. And it seems like, you know, if there's a new person every two years, it's just going to be learning the job, and just as soon as you learn it and start getting good at it and can maybe go 14 hours a week, then there's a new person who.
Learning curve.
Yeah, the learning curve is just, one of the things that I think might be taking, it might be the reason why there's so much time that it takes to do the job well.
The first year of a new job is always the hardest.
I think there are times, just in my own experience again, was a regional component to the work or an area component within the city because there were some issues that in, say, half of the wards were incredibly intense. And, you know, I was sending out eight-page newsletters on the topics, which will not be mentioned by name here, and others, which in other parts of the city didn't really percolate up as much either. And so, sometimes, depending on where the impact of different issues that the council deals with may fall, that can create an imbalance in terms of the amount of time that people may need to spend. And for example, you know, I was talking about the junction there, but the reverse might be when it came to some of the work that we had to do around COVID, when that first broke and before things got a little bit more under control, as maybe they are now, I think the impact was felt more heavily in the parts of the city that were more closer to, for example, the border with Prince George's and so on, not because of Prince George's specifically. And so I think in terms of, you know, casework and helping people who are looking for healthcare to help deal with COVID, then people who represented those wards maybe had a bigger load, and some of the people who were, you know, in Ward One, where I was from, maybe less so. So that also affects it, and that's hard to predict because an issue can come up that no one anticipates, and it doesn't just affect the whole city evenly. So I just throw that out there for contemplation.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Schlegel.
Thank you, thank you for the very thoughtful analysis. I just had some broad thoughts first, which is that. I just had some broad thoughts first, which is that while narrowly speaking, you're, you're supposed to look at compensation, it naturally leads you to look at questions about what are the time demands for these roles and why? And then it also invites you to look at recruitment broadly, and I appreciate that, that you took it upon yourselves to look in both those directions too, as they're all related issues. In terms of the, the full-time employment question, yes, I'm a full-time employed teacher, and this part of the year is, is crazy, crazy. I'm not even gonna say I keep my head above water. It's interesting though, cause there's a big philosophical question where if you made this akin to a paying what a full-time job paid, then for someone to choose to do, they would be choosing a career shift. And then if they did take on the job, they would have all their marbles in this job with a lot of incentive to hang on to it, uh, for reasons other than what the city needed or the people needed. So we have to think carefully about, uh, the idea of whether we want people to make careers out of being elected public servants at this level. I would tend to look to the two wings I mentioned, the time and the recruitment. I would favor steps to simplify the job, and I appreciate your thoughts about the complexities of communication. How wonderful it, it would be if, upon assuming the job, rather than even having a brand-new email address and, and a whole bunch of listservs to find, you just assumed the job of taking on an email that was called like, you know, ward5councilmember@tacoma park MD dot gov. And, you know, maybe the, the outgoing council member would understand that that website was just, you know, that whatever that email was just shifting to somebody else at that point. I think that would be a lovely thing, uh, and there might be some other things along the same lines where you think of it not as a human being is now in this role and they're gonna sculpt it their own way, but that the role continues and different people take it on. And then in terms of the recruitment side, I, I appreciate your emphasizing that. It's a big responsibility for the city, uh, but it's also something I see personally as a big responsibility. Like, part of the reason I, I do a lot of communication and explain what's going on is that I'm hoping that people who are taking an interest are, are getting a sense of confidence about their knowledge of what goes on in each realm of the council work. A very simple idea would be to consider that the people who show up for these meetings and speak are quite often our potential future council members. And what if right there on the podium where you're standing, there was always a stack of brochures in multiple languages saying, how do you get on the city council? What does the city council do? Or, or if it was a standard practice to somehow thank people, greet them when they're making a public comment, and say, please have one of these, you know, just to get the conversation going.
Thank you, those are, those are great ideas.
Thank you, council member Schlegel. One point that you raised about disincentivizing people just wanting to camp out for a job and a paycheck, um, I do think that you all touched upon this, and I know this is not a part of your charge, um, but, you know, we talked about the constant rotation of the two-year terms, but if you start talking about the possibility of someone having higher level salary that would be equivalent to a full-time salary, then you have to start talking about term limits as well. And so it's like, all of those things kind of relate. And so again, I, I appreciate you all putting in so much thought, but I, but I agree that this, that's kind of like a separate issue, um, but I do see how all of these different components relate to one another and have some ripple and trickle-down effects that could also annoy the Board of Edu, um, the Board of Elections folks as well. Council member Westling.
Thank you, thank you so much for this. I really appreciate that you all have put clearly a lot of time into it. I just want to share two, two things. One, um, I, as a parent of young kids, right? There is absolutely no way I could do this job if I didn't have a spouse who is home right now taking care of my kids. Full stop. I'm only even doing this now because my kids now have full-time daycare, AKA they're at public school all day, right? And the days when we have an M C P S holiday, I'm canceling my meetings, cause I can't, I can't focus on having a conversation with the city manager with my two kids running around. So just, if you're thinking from the perspective of parents and childcare, which you should, but it's, it's a big, way bigger than just this city as an issue. And the last thing I wanted to share was that I was, I was one of the council members that was at the Fall Maryland Municipal League Conference a weekend or two ago, and I, I, I said this to some of my colleagues and some others, my biggest takeaway from that conference was that we, Tacoma Park, I knew if there's a spectrum of like community involvement and public comments and how long our meetings are, I knew we were at one end of the spectrum. We're in a league of our own, like, big time, big time. When I talked with other folks and I said, oh, no, our meetings, we always have several public comments at least, and their eyes, uh, I was in a session about how to run efficient meetings, which we do. Our mayor runs very efficient meetings as, as much as she could, and then it became a punchline at one point for the facilitator to talk about how long the meetings are at Tacoma Park. But it's because we have a really high, high, high level of community involvement, not just the public comments, but also just the topics, you know? Like, I'm sure half, I'm sure there's a number of things that we do, a full-hour work session that other municipalities would rubber stamp, because the community, that's, that they're fine with it. So, uh, if you want to do something else to compare to the other municipalities, I would definitely recommend looking at the meeting times, which is, I mean, only one part, but the official meeting times, that a lot of other municipalities meet every other week, uh, their meetings might be an hour routinely. I mean, and when you add that kind of stuff up, and someone's like, oh, what? We have a meeting every other Monday, and like, gosh, if it gets to 90 minutes, we're like begging to go home, and I'm like, are you kidding me? Like, the first time we got out of here before 11, I like, was like, because it was like three months into the job. So anyway, uh, thank you, I know this is tricky and complicated, but just throwing that out there, um, as a newer person on the council, one of my observations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman, I just want to remind folks that my, my timer went off a very long time ago, and we have another group that is here.
Very quickly.
Extremely quickly.
Yes, I just, we've been talking around this, and you did a lot of work on this without labeling it as such, but if this is a part-time job, some of your suggestions will really help to make it a part-time job, and maybe that's a way to frame it. Just, and I had similar conversations at M M L. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I too had similar conversations at M M L. Some of my colleagues in larger cities, Rockville and Gaithersburg, were in awe that we had residents that filled Piney Branch Elementary to talk about the budget before the budget even dropped. Like, what? What is happening? How do you, what? It's like they took our old budget and, and had a whole presentation, so. To make recommendations about what we need to do.
It's a good problem to have.
It's a good problem to have. But it means that we have a super engaged community that, that kind of puts us in a league of our own, um, and that just means that there's a lot more work that we have to do as council members.
And I would like to say that of the 39, uh, community members who have responded to our survey so far, boy, oh, boy, wait till you see those responses, cause they are equally full of opinions, very, very opinionated with very lengthy responses in the open-ended section, so. I'm sure our awesome clerk Jessie will be getting those surveys to you, and if we open it up to more people, it's great reading.
And I'm sure they're all from Ward 6.
For you also to understand, uh, for some, they don't really know what you're doing, you know, and how much time you spend, and you can see that in some of the comments, and others fully recognize, um, so. And we, you know, having Peter with us really was enlightening for all of us because he was able to really highlight, you know, just the amount, the, the amount of time and how involved the constituents are, so.
Great. Thank you all so much, we really appreciate all of your hard work, and this has been extremely helpful.
Thank you.
Wonderful, okay, we are moving to the next item, which is our Board of Elections, 2024 Election Report.
While we're waiting, I'd, I'd just say we have, you'll recognize Matt Ling and Joe Goldman here to talk about the 2024 election and provide some recommendations to council for future consideration. And of course, Arthur David Olson is also here, who is not gonna speak, I'm sure, but, but, um, he's also very involved in our elections, as you know.
Wonderful.
Hello, everyone. It sounds like Jessie dispensed with introductions already, so I'll just barrel forward. I'm just gonna answer the question, any questions you all might have about the 2024 elections, um, after which Joe will discuss a little bit about the priorities moving forward. Just two things before, I take any questions about the report or the election, um, you know, we're sorry that the report is a little bit late, that's on me. Ended up being pretty, uh, we tried to be pretty exhaustive with this one, uh, and also I think the board was pretty pleased about our turnout and how, um, the election was run, so. Uh, with that, I'm happy to just take any questions, if anyone has any.
Do you got a question? Hold on one second, you, you took, Matt, you, you took us so fast, okay? Excellent. Well, I just want to say thank you, um, thank you all so much for all of the work that you do continuously for our, um, for our city as it relates to, to making sure that our voting, um, our elections go according to, um, according to plan and according to, the way in which they, they should be run. Quick question I have while we, we wait for, um, any, any other folks, and I just want to make sure that I am covering the right things. One of the things that came to mind for me was about, um, vote by mail and the drop boxes and seeing the high percentage of ballots that we received through those mechanisms, and wondered if, um, cause I know that when we went to vote by mail was, it was because of COVID, it was out of necessity, um, we went through the process of trying to navigate switching our, um, our cadence of elections to align with the federal election schedule. And I guess my, my question is, um, are we continuing to see, are we starting to see some growth? And I just want to make sure I'm not missing anything, cause I just see that it's 90%. Are we starting to see growth in the number of folks that are actually, um, voting by mail and using the drop boxes? Or has it been pretty consistent at around 90%? I'm just trying to.
You mean relative to vote in person?
Relative, yeah, yeah.
We've had, I think, the, the 2020 election, we had pretty few people doing vote in person. That was in part because we had a drive-through, it was a pretty neat situation. After that, I think we've pretty much held steady, I'm not sure what the numbers are exactly, but, um, maybe 500, a couple, I, I'm not sure, but it's been pretty steady the last two. I think most people prefer to vote by mail, I think, as we've seen, and there are just some people who want to come on Election Day. Some of those people might be showing up for federal or state elections, then realize they could also vote for a city election, and then we send them on their way to their.
That was actually the reason, one of the reasons why I asked the question, um, just because, again, the original thought was, oh, we would increase our voter turnout if we sync up with the federal election, not suggesting changing that schedule, cause that was, that was a lot. But, you know, now, I'm, I'm, I'm like, okay, in terms of city resources and as it relates to facilitating Election Day activities, we had to do things like run shuttles and things because people would get a little confused as to whether or not they could vote at the federal, for the federal election at the, um, at the community center. And so I'm just kind of wondering whether or not, like, over time, as we see this kind of matriculate more, you know, how do we want to perhaps, given the low number of folks that are actually voting on Election Day, like, are there some other things that we may want to consider down the line? Not talking about this next election, but just as we start to see more data in terms of how people are voting, um, and costs associated with our elections, do we want to start thinking about going all by mail Dropbox? Do we still want to make sure we have the day of, um, um, voting on-site? Do we need to run all of the shuttles? Just trying to think through, you know, in terms of logistically how Election Day is functioning, given that such a high percentage of our voters are actually voting by mail or dropping their ballots.
We'll certainly look at that, and the board is discussing, um, a lot of those issues going forward, just cost and what's the most efficient way to do this. I will say that there is same-day voter registration in Tacoma Park, so someone, you could have something that is sort of the same thing as in-person voting on Election Day, where they come, register same day, receive their mail-in ballot, and then drop it off at a Dropbox. So some of those costs that you might think you're saving by getting rid of in-person Election Day voting might still be there. I'd also say that frankly, I think the higher cost per ballot is almost certain, certainly way more expensive to do vote by mail than it is in-person.
Than it is in-person?
Yeah, in terms of, of the time it takes for staff.
Oh, okay.
I mean.
The staff cost for the mail-in.
You have so much signature for verification, ballot verification, tracking down all kinds of issues with different ballots, handling the ballots, I mean, it's, it's an immense amount of work compared to in-person voting.
Thank you, that's, that's a really.
Joe might have something to say as well here?
Well, yeah, I mean, um, yeah, first of all, I should just note that Matt has a three-week-old infant at home, so.
Oh, my goodness. Three-week-old and you're standing?
He's, he, he managed to stay awake for that, that question. You know, it's a little monotone. But, look, I, I think, um, so my, my name's Joe Goldman, I am in Ward 1 of Lee Avenue. My day job is at an organization called the Democracy Fund, and I spent a lot of my time advocating for things like vote by mail, and, um, this was my first election within the Board of Elections, and I was really struck by just how difficult and complicated vote by mail makes the job of running an election. And I think it pays up, like, it's not something we want to back away from, it's something that is very popular, it's very important, but it is extremely time-consuming. The amount of additional kind of security and work that needs to be done to make sure everything kind of lines up and works, it's just enormously, uh, challenging, and so that, if anything, that's the thing that makes our lives complicated.
Thank you for that. Council member Lammon?
Thank you for that. Councilmember Lammon?
I have two questions. The first is the bump up in participation. Does that align exactly with any particular change, like with when we went with, aligning with the federal elections or when we went with vote by mail?
That's been one of the debates we've been having for a long, for a long time, that, you know, just, we don't, we're not really, you have some data on it.
I mean, basically, everything happened at the same time. And so you can't know which thing to attribute it to. So basically, in 2020, we both switched to vote by mail and we aligned with the federal calendar. And so we have actually, because, in order to solve various sustainability problems, we have been thinking about the question of, should we go back to odd years? But the data does suggest that moving to even years is really important in terms of participation. But it's hard to say how much of it is about that versus vote by mail.
Okay, but in either event, it does align with the year that we went to. Okay, my other question is, I was at the community center this year and observed a number of people being very confused about the location of the relationship between their, you know, federal ballot and the local ballot, and not even being aware, as I think you were alluding to this, Madam Mayor, that they had a local ballot to vote. And there was also some confusion about whether they could actually put their ballots into the Dropbox because they couldn't figure out that that Dropbox wasn't so full that their ballot wouldn't go in. And there was a certain point at which people thought that. So I thought there was some, like, confusion about the two adjacent drop boxes and what was what, but also that maybe that Dropbox itself had a mechanical issue or a design issue. And I wonder if I'm the first person to ever mention that.
I haven't heard any mechanical issues about the drop boxes. It's pretty simple.
It was an appearance of a mechanical issue because of the way there was like a flap over the, over the deposit slot.
Exactly, and two padlocks that make it look like it's locked all the time.
Yes.
And I could tell you they're redesigning it, and it won't be like that anymore.
That's, that's the Maryland State.
That's the Maryland ballot Dropbox.
Okay, that's not our design, that's the state of Maryland. Okay.
I think our design is kind of like a.
Problem solved, okay. Never mind that question, but let's talk about the other one.
But the confusion over running a federal and a local election at the same time in two different places, like it is a significant issue. And I, part of what we've been talking about coming out of the election, there are four attributes of our elections that each one of them individually makes a lot of sense. It's a really good idea. Together, it's a challenge. So let me, the four things, right? So first, we run a separate election system from the county in order to support unique features to maximize participation, representativeness, and buy-in, right? And that is ranked choice voting, sixteen-year-old voting, non-citizen voting. Like, those are all good things, and it means that we need to run our own election. We can't do it with the county. The second thing is, right, we run our elections in even years at the same time as the county, which increases voter awareness that it's an election year. But it creates confusion because voters need to complete two separate ballots during the same election, whether you are having to cast them by mail, you're doing two different letters, and/or you're going to two different places. And the number of people who showed up to our polling place thinking that they were showing up for some, like, it was enormous and a problem, right? Number three, we reduce barriers to voting by allowing voters to vote in person early and on Election Day by Dropbox and by mail, which increases the work involved with managing the system because mail-in ballots require significant additional effort to support a secure and transparent process. And then number four, right, we're a small community, so we've got a relatively small budget for running our election and do not have a dedicated staff beyond effectively Jessie and one or two other folks. It's otherwise run by volunteers, and it creates this kind of sustainability problem in terms of being able to run this process. It creates real dependency problems, like, but for Matt, who in the weeks leading up to the election, it was a full-time job for him, and Arthur David, I should say. But for them, I'm not sure how we would have pulled it all off. And so there's a real concern about dependency and what happens if, you know, Matt has to now spend time with his newly-born child. And so I think we're really thinking about, how do these things come together? And what are, there's no silver bullet solution here. We're not pulling back from ranked choice voting. We're not pulling back from mail-in ballots. So are there things that we can do to bring the county in more? Are there things we can do to increase resources, better equipment, more staff? Are there things that we can do that make it easier to pull in other resources? If we were in an odd year instead of an even year, it might be easier for the county to help us. So those are the kinds of things we're really kind of trying to figure out. And if you look in the election report on page thirty-five in the appendix, you can kind of see kind of the major issues that we're concerned with and the kinds of things that we're looking at and recommending.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Hansa?
Thank you. I really appreciated reading the report and hearing your answers so far. I'm going to ask a few questions, and then you can just decide where to hit them, what order. One is about voter turnout overall. And this may be not a question for you all, maybe it's more a question actually for you, but I just don't know how this works. I'm curious about how good our, we think that our voter rosters are in terms of being updated. I've never really asked that question. And that also relates to sort of, I was thinking about the fact that we have two universities in town also in particular, which are well-known to have a lot of turnover if students ever even register here. And then I'm curious, maybe this is more for our board, if we have voter turnout numbers for our general, you know, county-state elections that we would be able to compare to ours to see if the trends are at all similar and kind of look at, you know, voter turnout and maybe by that means speculate about some of the factors that are contributing to our voter turnout. So that's about voter turnout. And then related to the sustainability of your efforts, which I think is very concerning and something that the council needs to really try to help, help you to solve, help us to solve with the current model of mail-in, assuming we don't want to pull back. It sounds to me like, and I like your comments on this, like, from your report, that if we, the council and the city and our communications department could work extremely hard to promote messaging, that if you drop off your ballot, you would save the city thousands of dollars. That could be a really important endeavor. Can you comment on that? And then also sounded like we underspent by almost thirty-five thousand what was budgeted for, which I think was sixty-five thousand, unless I misread those numbers. And you had said that we were severely underestimating, but does that mean that money is not really what would help? Or is it that we just need to be more clear about who gets that money so that it's more sustainable? And then finally, would trying to save money and still achieve the objectives that you just laid out perhaps be a good reason to very seriously consider moving to a four-year election cycle? Thanks.
So do you want the data quality of the list?
I'll just say for the quality of the voter data, we get our lists from the state of Maryland. They're updated up until they send out their last update, and when they close registration, they send that to us. So ours is as good as the state of Maryland. We have our own list. I think the quality of that list is pretty good. It's not a very large list. And we update it in-house, in the city clerk's office updates it and keep track of it, but.
And because we have same-day voter registration, if somebody were to come in and they're not on the list, they can, even on the day of the election, they can register and they can then vote, right? But I don't know, Jessie, is there?
Right, and I don't have numbers, but we do get a lot of return ballots, undeliverable ballots that come back. And I think it just has to do with how mobile people are. People are always moving, and that causes those problems. But, and I think the state has the same problems. So it's, with all vote by mail, that is a challenge because we waste, you know, hundreds, hundreds of ballot packets, probably three to five hundred out of the total, out of eleven thousand. So it's a, it's a small percentage, but we do waste. In terms of, I will say, in terms of the saving money by returning to the ballot Dropbox, the vast majority come in. We have these numbers somewhere, and I'm sorry, they're probably not in the report. The vast majority come by ballot Dropbox. A smaller number comes through mail. They're mostly out-of-town people that mails their ballots.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, effectively, vote by mail versus Dropbox, like, yes, you're saving, I guess, on postage, but you're still having to do the same kind of additional verification that you wouldn't otherwise have to do if people are checking in and voting at a voting booth. So I'm not, I'm not sure.
No, I'm sorry. Pardon me for interrupting, but I think that I picked it up somewhere in the report, and perhaps I misread it. I thought it was explicitly saying that it was a lot cheaper. And I'm sorry, I did this a few days ago, so I don't have the page marked. Okay, no worries. No worries. Let's just skip that one.
Sure. On the comparison to statewide, I mean, nationally, if you look at kind of statewide offices, elections and presidential and all that, like, participation is always much, much higher for statewide offices and national elections. So I don't know that we learn a whole lot by those comparisons. As you saw in the previous presentation, like, our voting rates are at the high end for local elections. And to the extent that you see variability within the city, I think the highest correlation is where you've got competitive, you know, when, I think I've got a slide here, right? The, right, the wards that had the lowest levels of participation were the wards where you only had a single candidate running. So that, like, that tends to, that seems to be the clearest sign of variability there in terms of participation. Four-year election cycle, we have talked about. We haven't dug in deep, but I think that is something that could reduce wear and tear. You're running fewer elections. So I think it's worth, it's worth considering.
Just to piggyback off of that point, because we heard from the prior group that, you know, the council ramp-up is also a factor in terms of the level of effort that council members have to take to get up to speed, staff support to get people up to speed, and then you have an election a year and a half later, and then you may have to do it all over again. Is looking at the four-year option something that the Board of Elections would be, would be willing to look into? One of the things that would be helpful, at least for me, is to see whether or not there's some concrete recommendations and whether or not the council would need to take next steps, which could be a referendum. It could be something on behalf of the council, just so that we can try to make sure that if this is something that would be helpful from the perspective of cost, but also from the perspective of making sure that council members have what they need and the constant churn of council can be a problem specifically for newer council members to get on, up to speed and kind of being able to move without having to run for reelection. I think it might be really good for us to, as a council, to be made aware of that in case there are some steps that we want to take to at least, at a minimum, put something like this, discuss something like this as a council in terms of a policy change or put it before, before our residence as a voting item.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know why we couldn't take a look at that. I mean, just theoretically, the reason why you would want shorter terms is you want a more responsive body in an environment in which issues are changing dramatically. It's not clear to me that issues change dramatically in Tocco Park that requires a new infusion of blood every two years. But, but yeah, it's something we could certainly take a look at.
Great, thank you.
And just on the question about kind of budgeting, like, to me, the thing that would make the most difference in terms of sustainability is more staff, right? And so like, to the extent that there is something that would make a big difference that has a real budget implication, that's where I would, I would look to.
Thank you. Councilmember Dabala?
Which was actually my two questions. Thank you for all your work and congratulations, Matt. It's been huge, what you've had to do in the last couple of cycles compared to what it was like before. And so looking on pages twenty-three and four at your considerations and at your priorities. And most of these things seem like things that can be, can be done, a little planning ahead, a little more public information and so forth. But this question of how to recruit election judges and how to get on the, on-the-ground staffing assistance and how much that would cost seems like something that we would, I would appreciate an estimate on, and I'm not sure who I ask for that. If I ask you guys or if I ask city manager.
Yeah, and we'd be happy to work with Jessie to figure that out.
Yeah, yeah, based on the, didn't you, you have one this time, based on the experience of that. That'd be great. And then I had been also wanting to ask about the four years. And specifically, if you were to take this on, I would be interested, based on my conversations with other communities at Maryland Municipal League, I have learned that there are quite a few communities that have four-year terms for all the reasons that we were just discussing and what their experience, particularly in the election arena, is with that. Does it make it harder because people forget that they're supposed to vote locally? Does it make it easier because they're more determined, because they're more angry at whoever's in office? That, just looking at the experience of other communities in this might be useful.
Yeah, I mean, I would be surprised if there isn't significant academic literature on the question, so we can turn that up.
Well, I hadn't thought of that. That's a good idea. So again, thank you very much for this report.
Thank you, Councilmember Dabala. Councilmember Schlegel?
Yes, thank you very much for the report. I just had one comment on the four-year term thought, which is related to the previous presentation. I do wonder whether it would be a deterrent to some people to think, oh, wow, I wonder if I can look in my crystal ball and see that I will be able to make this commitment for four years as opposed to just two. A lot of life changes can happen, and congratulations, Matt. I had, my questions were, do you think it's, first of all, this is a kind of, do you think it's possible to get clarity to candidates on the timing of the mailed-out ballots? It is so significant when you're planning a campaign and you're canvassing schedule that if you know that those ballots are going to be in people's hands by, say, October fifteenth or twentieth or twenty-fifth, well, not that late, you would then, you don't want to be in a position of knocking on doors and they say, oh, I already sent it in, you know? You want to try to avoid that. And so that backwards mapping, that really has you thinking already in August if you have a lot of canvassing in your plan. And I know that it's, it's often not, not clear when the mailing is going to go out. And I don't know how much control there is over predicting how long it will take to get to homes.
We work with our vendors about the timing of that, and I think going forward, we could try to be more clear with all the candidates about when those are going out. I mean, honestly, if I was running, I would probably start my campaign earlier. It is, you're right, hard, and you don't want to waste your time. You don't have much time. It's a pretty short campaign season, knocking on doors if people already voted. One thing I wanted to implement that is just a lot of work, but would be helpful to campaigns would be if campaigns received updated voter lists from the city that would show the ballot status of the voters. So the campaigns would know if someone had mailed in a ballot already. They would just know not to go knock on that door perhaps.
Okay.
Because we get that data, we can turn around that data pretty quickly. So if we receive a ballot.
I guess you wouldn't know how many voters are in the home, but yeah.
That's true. Yeah, that's right.
Okay, thank you. Also, when I, when I was canvassing, a number of people said, oh, yeah, I got my ballot. But when they went and looked, they had received the advanced mailing. And I have had concerns from people about whether the advanced mailing is superfluous, whether it's legally required. Because sometimes people actually, they went, they, they said, well, I couldn't find my ballot. I had set this thing aside, but now I look, it's not an actual ballot. Obviously, people need to do their own homework, but I wonder if we could save a bunch of money by using the newsletter as the advance notice and then just mailing the ballot. using the newsletter as the advance notice and then just mailing the ballot.
We're certainly open to ideas to inform people about the election and their ballots coming, but also save money, so we'll certainly look into that and try to get a sense of, like, how effective those mailings are and letting people know.
Thank you. There's a, I'll just note that in my, in canvassing, I, I think, um, one time I calculated it, in, in 2020, I calculated that out of maybe one hundred seventy-five non-citizens whom I'd spoken to, uh, there were about three who knew that they could vote in Tacoma Park, so I, I do think that all, all of us need to be putting our heads together about how we, if that is an option, how do we make it something that many people feel comfortable taking advantage of? And I do wonder, I, I've heard that people are worried about voting because if you apply for citizenship, you are asked, have you ever voted in an election? And they're afraid of having to say that they did, even though it's a municipal election, so it's something for us to try to figure out if we can reassure people or get some kind of legal guidance for, to share with them. And regarding the, uh, the even years versus odd years, the confusion about the site is something that you, your team, you know, took on a lot of, and I know the candidates outside the building are also trying to direct people. But I also wanted to point out that there, there's confusion in terms of what's arriving in the mail. People, people, I'm at their door and they say, yeah, I got a ballot, I don't know what, what jurisdiction that's for. And then there also there's confusion regarding that this is a nonpartisan election. I've had people say, so are you Democratic or Republican, and, um, you know, I think that's because they're getting so many glossy postcards coming from so many candidates in the months leading up. That's an observation, and one last question. Given the, given what you just said a, a little bit ago, Matt, about how candidates should probably get going earlier, should we really be looking at moving our nominating caucus up? Realistically, the, the possibility of anybody saying, hey, I've got a neighbor who I think would be great on the city council, I'm going to nominate them on September, whatever, mid-September. Realistically, that, that, that person is already way too far behind, and if they, if they do any research, they'll be like, no, I, I decline the nomination. It would be a beautiful thing if, if people actually could get up in July and say, you know, I'm nominating somebody. Now, what are you going to do about it, you know?
So, uh, those are all great questions and points that you raised. The Board is certainly looking for ways to improve awareness of the election. There's always a lot of confusion, just coming up with better ways to present the ballots, what's in the ballots, these are all things that, you know, we're constantly trying to think of and improve on. For moving the caucus, uh, forward or back on the calendar, that's something the Board, um, we haven't had those conversations yet, but that's something we can certainly look at going forward.
One of the things to that point that I would encourage the Board to think about is how the nominating caucus juxtaposes with council business. Council is usually on recess in August, typically leading up to, um, June, you know, end of March, April, Iish, is budgeted full-time, everybody's heads down. So that typically leads, leaves a, a little time in the summer for council to be dealing with other business, and I think that that could have some implications by increasing or moving up the nominating caucus on staff capacity, because they're, they're really focused and should be focused on, um, on city business, which is coming out of budget discussions at that time. And so I just want to kind of leave that caveat, and I think one of the reasons why perhaps the nominating caucus in September actually works, it kind of dovetails with the prior presentation, um, because, uh, this time around, I know that staff has instituted a number of training opportunities for people to, um, meet with the, um, city management team, to have different sessions and the like, and some of that can actually be more beneficial to have during August, when we're not around to bother them. And that gives them a little bit more time to kind of have those sit-down opportunities, so that's just, just in terms of logistics and timings, some, some things to consider as well. Uh, Councilmember Westlick.
Uh, thank you. And on that note, I'll piggyback that, yeah. Also, if, if the date for when you can register as a candidate could be moved earlier, because I'll be honest, because it's in June, I knew I was running for months before that, and I remember someone was like, well, you have to buy your website, you have to buy, like, the domain name. And I was, I was legit stressed that I spent money for my campaign in April, that I had to then report, but I wasn't yet a candidate, and just, anyway, silly stuff like that. I wanted to add, well, two things. One, I wanted to add that as we think about the in-person voting and the, the cost of the in-person and the shuttles, and, and just remembering that the folks that are, you know, on the eastern side of the city, it's, some of it is kind of the opposite, right? Everyone in my neighborhood, they're going to vote for this state and federal at the rec center, and they think, oh, and I can do in-person for the city. No, you have to get over there, and I know we tried to remedy that, and, and I know it's also costly, so I'm just, as you think that through, just, uh, remember that kind of the converse of, of folks on the other side of the city and where they're coming from. The, the big thing I wanted, and I, I would love to, maybe this is just, uh, so that you can, like, purge, but I would love to hear more about, like, the days after the election, because you all were here so many hours, for so many days. It was very unclear if when results would be shared, which I understood, but was, especially this past November, a lot of people were texting me wanting to hear some good news. But, uh, can you talk about, like, did, was that anticipated because of the way our elections run, was that extraordinary? How would staff help with that? Because that, that was just so huge. I mean, I, I had the YouTube streaming and saw you guys all the time, so anything you want to share about that?
I thought we turned around the results pretty, pretty quickly, given the constraints. So we received maybe about two thousand and three hundred ballots or so before through mail. Uh, we try to process all of those, so those are ready to go through the tabulation machines, so we can report results on Election Day. Um, I think we did do that. Uh, we do not, um, tabulate the ballots received on Election Day through vote in person, or also received through the drop boxes, which might account for another eight hundred ballots, or might probably more than that, it's probably maybe like a thousand or two thousand ballots. So we probably get through about half of the ballots processed by Election Day, and then we have another half to go afterwards. Um, and so if they come in through vote by mail, uh, we have to do all the same checks as we did if they were coming before Election Day. We have to count them, you know, three times, then we have to read the signature, you know, check the signatures, scan them in, you have to count them again, you have to count them again, you have to, I mean, it just, there's just an endless amount of work that I'm sure a lot of you were able to watch on YouTube. And so those, we should get those done in shifts. You know, business hours, pretty much in the days following, we, we do it on the weekend as well. That's just kind of how long it usually takes. I, I will say the state, it, they take much longer than, than we do, um, so.
Oh, yeah, and it's not at all a reflection on how fast you all were working, it was just the magnitude of the work, and I guess, so you're saying that you guys went into election season thinking, all right, for a week after Election Day, I'm living here, I'm here nine to five.
We set up shifts beforehand, and we sort of figure out, and folks know, yeah.
Multiple days.
Yeah.
Not just, okay.
Yeah, we can kind of estimate how long, it's about a week or so.
Okay.
Yeah, well, and, and I think, I mean, there's an, and, you know, in a world in which we were a larger community that had more voters and more, more resources and all of that, like, we might have different equipment that would allow things to go more quickly. We might have more staff that could do things instead of, like, by Election Day, this group of volunteers is really tired, right? We've been dealing with complaints, we've been dealing with, and so I, I think it, it is a matter of, yeah, we're, we're scheduled for shifts and people are tired, right?
Thank you, you guys put in so much work, thank you.
And I, and I should say on the, on the, so there were several heated campaigns this season. I think more complaints than, as I understand it, there have been in any previous recent elections. And we have thought it was important to kind of be very clear and transparent in the future about kind of how we are going to be handling complaints. And so we've worked on kind of, here's a set of criteria, um, that we're going to be using that we will, that we'll be kind of sharing with you all for comment, and we'll, we'll be able to kind of make public of, like, this is our general philosophy about how we think about what's important, these are the things we take into consideration, this is the timeline, so, so that's going to be something that we'll be doing in the future as well.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Landman.
So I have a two-part question. I heard people say at the Maryland Municipal League, talking about elections, and this was sort of loose talk, so it may or not, may not have been true, that the county ballot counting capability exists to handle ranked choice voting, although it's not in use right now, but that they could do it if they were given the opportunity. And I, I wonder if that is nonsense or not, that not every, not every municipality who was included in the ballot would need to have, be using it for them to be able to handle questions for Tacoma Park that were ranked choice, and if that's accurate, then I have a second part to my question.
We, we've had ongoing negotiations, I think, with the county and the state for many years, and it's just not been the case that they've, they shouldn't need openness to taking it on for the ranked choice. Um, I don't know if that could change, but I'd tell a heart understanding that the ranked choice voting is kind of a deal breaker for them right now. I mean, and there are other things as well, but.
They, maybe they could, but they're not interested, or other people might be able to, but, okay.
That's the Board's understanding.
It has to do really with how Maryland elections are organized statewide. Everything is the same. You know, if you vote in Anna Rundle County, if you vote in Prince George's County, it's, it's almost exactly the same process. And that's part of the resistance to, for instance, allowing Montgomery County, or having Montgomery County use ranked choice voting for county council elections, for instance. The challenge is that makes Montgomery County completely different from every other county, and that, that's not how the state elections are set up. I mean, in some states, it's different, it's, every county does their own thing, but here in Maryland, it's the same system statewide. And so that, that's a challenge that people who are advocating for that need to overcome. Yes, the equipment could spit out a, um, a, a cast vote record that could then be used to calculate the ranked choice voting, but that's not what the state contract is to do that. I mean, it would be a separate process, so it's not as simple as it sounds. It, it would require a change in how the state handles its elections.
To, to get to your point, we are interested, you know, we've been trying to see how we can get integrated into the, the county, you know, because I know there might be cost savings there, and we've been looking at that for a long time now.
Let me go ahead and ask my second question then, because it does seem like if, um, even if we were to, um, let's say we were to have our ballots simply include this question, and then it comes out with a result that shows what everybody's tallies are, we can do the mathematics on the ranked choice voting ourselves after the tallies come out in five minutes, and, and, I guess we can't, no, we can't do that, I'm wrong about that, but let's say we figure out how to solve the issue of, of Montgomery County being given permission by the state, and that might be something we take up with the MML one day for changing state legislation, if it's opposed at the state level. And we need, and we need legislation to do it, I don't know, but wouldn't it be possible hypothetically to have, um, to participate in the, the larger ballot for everybody else, but to have mail-in ballots for younger voters or non-citizen voters that we handled separately so that we could, uh, on a larger scale, save money by participating in the, in the county ballot?
Setting aside the ranked choice voting question.
Yes, I mean, if we do solve the ranked choice voting question, could we then, you know, overcome the problem, because it's a really small, I mean, it's a vanishingly small number of non-citizen voters, and has been consistently, and I hope that changes one day, but, and for, for young people, it's relatively small, so could that be a money saver for us?
What we would need to do, to, the process to do that, is we would have to align our deadlines with the state deadlines. So there would be no more nominating caucus in September, or, I mean, things would have to be, we would need to conform to the deadlines for a, a state election. We would have to make a number of changes, it would take a couple of years to get there. It, it's doable, but it would take, you know, four to six years, I think.
And I do want to correct the, the record on one matter. We do not collect information, immigration information about our voters, so we do not know what proportion of our voters are immigrants or undocumented. So I, I do want to make sure that that point is clear, that, that we do not collect that data, and therefore we do not know, so.
Sorry about that, I've read a study that, that enumerated how many non-citizen had voted, so I don't know where they got their, it was a published, uh, research report, so I don't know where they got their numbers from, but I assume.
About Tacoma Park?
Yeah.
It's old data, it's, it's, um, up until 2017, we collected the data that way.
I see.
We don't anymore, so now it's, um, if you register with the city of Tacoma Park and not with state, then you're a Tacoma Park voter.
I see, okay, well, then I guess it would not be possible to overcome that obstacle.
Just two more thoughts on that, the first being that we would be at the mercy of how long it takes them to turn around their mail-in ballots, so I don't know if you have tracked your ballot through Maryland State, I have, and sometimes we get a notification that they've accepted a month after the election. So that might be one issue for us, the other, just putting on my lawyer hat, is that we need to be careful, we need to be able to accept votes in the same way, so we can't have people voting different ways. People need to be able to vote the same way, more or less.
Thank you, and I just want to remind my colleagues, we are at time for this discussion. Councilmember DeBala, if you can make it quick.
Yeah, just a, a potentially useful factoid. The nominating date is in the city charter, not in the code. And so that's a big deal to change, just letting everybody know, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember DeBala, Councilmember Schlegel.
I just wanted to thank city clerk Jesse Carpenter. And when talking about sustainability, I, I truly appreciate what all the volunteers went through. But I, I, I can't even say enough about having seen the amount of effort that, and time that was going in for you, and I think that whoever's in that position, we, we all need to be aware of how our system affects that person and other knock-on effects that result, so thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Councilmember Schlegel. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I, I recognize firsthand that the last election was a doozy. And the fact that you all continue to do this work with a level of professionalism, and, um, the volunteers that you all have on Election Day are just amazing, amazing, amazing folks who are really committed to making sure that elections run with integrity and, and supportive of our residents, and so I cannot thank you all, the, the Board of Elections, and all of our volunteers enough, and of course, our city clerk, uh, for all of the work that, that she does to make sure that we're able to sit in these seats. And so thank you all so much. So now you can go home.
I just wanted to say we're always welcoming more feedback or ideas, you know, to improve things, so I think you all have our emails.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And can we please get a picture of the baby? Awesome, okay. So we are going to move into our adoption of minutes. Would someone like to move, um, the adoption of minutes from March the eighth, January the twenty-ninth, and February the fifth? Thank you, Councilmember Westlick, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Gilbert. Just want to make sure there are no points of discussion. Okay. See you none. All those in favor of adopting the minutes from March the eighth, January the twenty-ninth, and February the fifth, please say aye. Aye. Do we have any opposed? Any abstained, all right? So the minutes move. Okay, now we're going to move to council comments. Do we have any council comments this evening? I know we went a little out of cycle, but we have lots of presenters. Uh, Councilmember. Councilmember Hanzak.
Sorry, just trying to grab my notes again. You know what? If someone else wants to go first, I'm still trying to.
No worries. Councilmember Gilbert, you ready?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Thank you. First of all, I want to say that I'm concerned that I'm the only person that needs to go to the restroom twice. And no one else has moved. The whole time, we haven't had a break, so.
Better hydrated.
Yeah, is that hydration?
We're not healthy.
I just wanted to say really quickly, I will, first of all, thank you for the comments earlier. Mr. Arthur, you continue to amaze me with the level of insight that you give us. And as Councilmember Schlegel said last week, the way you open our eyes and give us food for thought for certain things throughout the, throughout the city. So thank you for your comments. Really moved by Mr. Williams, Williams' comments earlier regarding Recreation Department. I feel his passion that he has for the city still, after many years. Not sure if the Recreation Department has responsibility for revenue production. But I'm, I was taken by his thoughts on the cost for our residents. And it's something to think about. I do know that they offer subsidizing for some of the kids, and I think that's good, but it's something to think about and look into. He mentioned Calvin Avant, and I know we've heard that name before. And I, and when I hear his name, it really makes me think about the fact that we have a field named after Lee Jordan, and a field named after Ed Wilhelm, who were both tremendous advocates for children and who did a lot for our community, and we have nothing for Mr. Avant. And I'd like for us to at some point have a discussion about something for Calvin. He did exactly what Bradley said. He saved lives. And during a time when there was a lot of hotspots along the Maple Avenue corridor and other spots in Tacoma Park, and he was the sole youth advocate and outreach worker for Recreation Department. And he did more than just develop programs. He went out and he met children at their level, and he came into our homes. And he brought us to the programs. I'm not sure how much of that is necessary now. I don't know. There needs to be a complete evaluation on that. I would love to talk to Greg about it some more. But again, we need to really acknowledge Mr. Avant while he's still breathing and offer him his flowers. And speaking of offering flowers, Jesse, you do a tremendous job for us. And you, you know, you, you're there for every time we ask for something. And I just want to express my appreciation for how available you are for us as well. Really quickly, I'll be at the Board of Education tomorrow to testify, to present a testimony about the capital improvement project for Piney Branch Elementary School. I said it before, and I'll express it again, that I'm really hopeful that whatever they decide to do, that it creates that balance that we have now for that school, and what it does for our children, staff, and the community. I know there's some asks from the staff about how they can make the environment a lot better for the children in regards to spacing and lighting and other asks. But to really come, to complete that balance, that pool and that larger-sized gym that we have are really necessary. The programs that are run out of that gym and what the pool offers to our kids in regards to water safety is incredible. So I'm really hopeful that we'll, we'll get the result that we want there. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Gilbert. Councilmember Hanzak.
Thank you. Thanks for your delay. I, too, was really taken with Mr. Williams' comments. In fact, I didn't know about Steve Francis until I came into this role, and Councilmember Terry Siemens introduced me to a whole group of people that had grown up with Steve here. And I heard a lot of these stories from those residents and their friends over the last few years. And so putting all of that together, it starts to paint a picture of how things have evolved over time in our city. And I think, I think that it speaks also to this, to something that my council member Gilbert, fellow council member Gilbert and Westlick, we've been talking about more extensively, following on from our discussion last week about Community Connectors. I think we've just need to do a much, much better job of communicating key issues such as scholarships, whenever, however, it is necessary to bring it straight to the people, and that it shouldn't necessarily have to fall on council members to make sure we're hand-delivering that to people, but proactively making sure those are accessible. I think that the idea of our folks like, I'm sorry, how did you say? Evan? Is that his name? Evan? That they would go out into the community, including Mr. Williams himself, and bring people in. You know, that's a lot to ask, but I think with that spirit, I think we need to think about what therefore the Community Connectors can look like. And then another issue, this is just a small, small but big thing that made a big impact, and I want to bring this to the attention of my fellow council members and our staff. I learned over the last couple of days that one of the small businesses in my part of the city waited for five full days, including a weekend, without electricity from Pepco. And I won't get into all the details, but this individual was like, well, can I, could I lean on the city to get help with that kind of thing? Turned out, we got it all sorted, but I would like to address things like that and make sure our business owners know, who can they call when they need an advocate? This business lost crazy amounts of money. Okay. And, and then a fun thing. This Friday, Peace Park here in Ward 5, there will be a fall planting with our, with our city gardener, starting at 8:30 in the morning. And they're also going to be remembering Jim Baird. I'm excited that the Tacoma Park Cooperative Nursery School kids are going to come out and join them because they also spend a lot of time down there. And, and then finally, oops, sorry, jumping down here in my notes. Also, the, I'm sorry, I lost, I lost my spot. Oh, Coma Coffee is going to have their two-year anniversary overlapping with Monster Bash. But as soon as you're done with Monster Bash, it will still be going on. Free live music, food, all the way until 5:00 PM. So come on over and join us in Ward 5. And, and then finally, just reminding everybody, if you haven't registered yet for the Long Branch 5K on November the 2nd, it is a 5K that comes through the city of Tacoma Park. So please share the information with your residents in case they are missing the 5K that we used to have that went through the city. This is a 5K that goes through the city and supports our businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanzak. Councilmember DeBala.
Thank you. Just very quickly, a couple of things. Thank you to the city staff for organizing a meeting on the plans for Dorothy Woods to implement the grant money that the city got to do things that the residents have been asking for ever since we bought the place. So that's great. November 4th, 6:30, I think that's a Monday or a Tuesday night, to talk about the work that will be done with the grant money that the state, that the city received to work on Dorothy's Woods. Second thing, I got a note from the library, one of the librarians, that if you want to donate books, you got to do it by Saturday. And last, on the question about recreation and making sure that, that folks know what they're eligible for and that we're doing this for the kids and not for raising money. Two things. One, I very much think that the recreation program is not a revenue raiser. It's a program for the residents and particularly the kids and seniors. And two, let's ask the Recreation Department what they think they need more of, if any, to be able to promote more, to be able to advertise more, make more things available. I would appreciate somebody checking in with Director Clark. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember DeBala. Councilmember Schlegel.
Thank you. I first wanted to mention that this Sunday at 4:00 PM, Pinecrest Neighborhood is going to be having a meeting internal to the neighborhood, just to talk about how they might reorganize and get clear on what their vision and priorities are. So that should be at the VFW on Sunday at 4:00 PM till 5:30. Economic Development Week makes me think about Pinecrest and Lower New Hampshire Avenue and the way that so much is dependent on some stronger relationships between jurisdictions, possibly with the state's help. So might be thinking about that with legislative priorities, since so many of our commercial areas are shared with other jurisdictions. I'm very excited to see details about the contract for the rent stabilization study, and particularly how outreach will be handled and measured through that. Halloween coming up, I just wanted to point out that a diehard Sycamore resident always does data analysis and says how much candy people need to buy, Steve Rosenthal. But I think that he's off this year because we're back to a Friday night Halloween. So it's going to be crazy if the weather's good. Bradley Williams was completely inspiring, I agree. And along those lines, I noted very early coming out of the council that recreation, and particularly recreation for youth, is a common interest for all seven of us and something that we're all excited about. And I think he made very clear with a lot of detail the difference that it makes when it's there and the difference that it makes when it's not there. So I hope that as we move into this budget season, we can really be thinking about recreation on the ground. What will work? What will bring people in? How to get the barriers out of the way? And I think he spoke so eloquently for what it does for the community and for, for real options in life for kids. Mr. Olson, thank you for your idea for the Jubilee Year for Public Works. It's a fascinating idea. I also wanted to point out that the sign was an oxymoron, "Slow, dangerous intersection." Most of the slow intersections are not dangerous. But I think that's the one where Sycamore not only takes a curve, but takes a deep dip right at the end. So that sign may have to be there forever, given the street design. So let me see if there's, oh, thank you to Mr. Hefner for his emphasis on the need that we, and I hope that we can write a letter in support of that program. And last, from where I sit, this dais looks beautiful. Nice, shiny vermicah, dark-toned wood. I don't see any chips or dents or scratches, so I'm really curious as to what needs replacing here. Thanks.
You say that as your colleagues next to you are pointing at their chipped facade. Councilmember Westlick.
Thank you. I just wanted to raise a couple of quick things. Like Councilmember Gilbert, I will be testifying tomorrow evening in front of the County Board of Education in support of replacing Piney Branch School, as well as emphasizing, supporting the superintendent's recommendation for creating holding schools that are much closer to Piney Branch so that when our kids are displaced, they will not have to go 10 miles away on the Beltway to get to school. So I'm excited about that. I wanted to share, I stopped by the Crossroads Market today, as I've, I've been doing often. It runs through November 26th. That is the day before Thanksgiving. So if folks want to think about how they can work the produce at Crossroads Market into their Thanksgiving plans, you can start thinking about that now. And lastly, I just wanted to give a quick thank you to the Public Works staff. Over the last couple of weeks, maybe more, a sidewalk has been installed in the New Hampshire Gardens neighborhood. Some crosswalks have been relocated in safer locations, as well as the curb cuts. So little by little, we're trying to make that area safer for everyone who lives there. So I just wanted to say thank you to this, to the staff who made that happen. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Westlick. Councilmember Landman.
Thank you, Adam Mayor. First, I want to join with my colleagues in thanking Mr. Williams for his comments tonight, which were very insightful. And also, as Councilmember Hanzak said, they really relate back to our Community Connections plans that we're thinking about. And what struck me is that the people that we have right now lined up to serve on that core team, we don't really have somebody with the recreation perspective that he brought that was so important. And it seems like a good moment to think whether perhaps somebody, either he or somebody like him, couldn't really be a really useful and valuable person to participate as a core team member because the people that he has connections to and the insights that he has are quite different from the other people who are currently thought of as core team members. So I just wanted to put that idea out there for council members and the city staff to think about because I really thought that what he had to say was very different and very valuable. I want to share Councilmember Schlegel's support for following up on the suggestions made by Fred Hefner, who's been absolutely invaluable, along with his colleagues on the, on the team at Tacoma Park Presbyterian Church, and supporting the mental health clinicians coming on board and finally getting that program rolling. And I hope we can have a letter come from the city council. I'd be happy to work with the mayor and the staff on making sure that happens because it is a critical moment to let the council, the county council know how important that is to us as a city. And I also wanted to thank the police department. I'm getting reports from parts of Ward 1 that the first sign of the stop sign cameras going in, that they're seeing a slowdown in violations of stop signs and people actually stopping, they're claiming. So I haven't been over to that part of the ward to see it myself, but they're already seeing positive results. So that's a great tidbit of news, and I'm really delighted that we're seeing change in the air even before. I guess it's only notifications that would be going out now, but people have noticed the cameras, and safety is already being the benefit. And finally, I want to say thank you to the Public Works Department and to Darryl Braithwaite and her team for holding one of their meetings that they do with the folks on Chestnut Avenue in advance of the installation of the sidewalks that are coming there, to listen very carefully to the comments from the, from the people who live on the street, to go over the plans, and to make sure that everybody knows what's coming and has a chance to take a close look and have their questions answered. It was a really great example of seeing how that department is really good at staying in touch with residents, keeping them informed, and letting them have a chance to weigh in. So I appreciate it, and so did the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Landman. I want to thank Bradley Williams for his advocacy today. It is really important and I always welcome people who are passionate about our youth. As was mentioned earlier, everyone on this dais is really passionate about making sure that we are providing support for our youth and, you know, and it's, it's actually reflective in how we have covered our recreational costs over the years. First, I just want to make sure that the community knows that information regarding the scholarship was available and noted within the recreation brochure. It was in there. Again, that doesn't negate the importance of making sure that people know, but if people were looking for information about the, the programming that we have, they would also have seen in that same brochure the scholarships that we have available. I also just want to remind my colleagues, for those of you that are new. Prior council made a decision, and we have consistently recognized that we are, our recreational services cost more than they bring in. Currently, our cost recovery for recreational services is only 25% of the expenses. And we knew that going in because we thought it was just very important. We actually continued the level of scholarship provision for our Recreation Department that we had using COVID funds because we wanted to make sure that we were able to continue to allow youth who need access to scholarships to continue to participate in our programs. Now, again, that's not to deny the importance of making sure that we have resources available in the community, and I trust that my colleagues and I, we will all continue to do so. But I do just want to make sure that everyone is clear that information regarding our recreational scholarships are available in our. that information regarding our recreational scholarships are available in our, is available in our recreation brochure. And we have purposefully made a decision as a council to take cost loss for our recreational services in order to ensure that we have scholarship opportunities available to any students that need them. The, want to thank our, yes, gosh, today is Wednesday. It was yesterday. I want to thank our fabulous team, our emergency preparedness lead, Mark McInerney, our sustainability manager, Dorothy Estrada, and Patty Malin for all of her fabulous grant writing ability. I have the opportunity to attend yesterday the Pepco Sustainable Communities Grant Award, 2025 Award, and we received $16,000 in support of our resilience, resilience hub work. So want to thank all of the staff that were involved in putting together that proposal. And it was a great, a great opportunity again for us to engage with Pepco and Sustainable Maryland on the wonderful work that we can do in terms of leveraging resources to make sure that we're able to provide support to our community. Also for, just want to thank again the Maple Tree Group, oh gosh, I cannot read my handwriting, and the Presbyterian Church for the bazaar that happened this weekend. Those are great. Mental health, I want to thank Fern and folks in terms of the mental health, mental health counselors advocacy. Just want to stress that staff has been in communication with Montgomery County staff nonstop. Also had an opportunity with staff to speak with members of the county council in support of this. And also had an opportunity to speak with Rich Madalino, or Chief of Staff, for the county exec around this matter. So definitely want folks to know that we are doing our due diligence to really try to ensure that the needs for additional staffing support for the city is included in these county exec's budget. The, just want to remind folks that released, I think it was yesterday, there's a new blog that I've put out around what to do if you witness immigration enforcement. We recognize that these are some really uncertain times and there's difficulty in knowing what to do when you see things occurring and knowing for sure what something, what is actually occurring. So I've released a blog to try to help with clarifying some of, or at least providing a little bit of direction and clarity around what to do in the event that you see immigration enforcement happening in our community. Just as a reminder for my colleagues, the Montgomery County Chapter MML meeting is tomorrow at 6:30 PM. So I want to send special thanks to Councilmembers Gilbert and Weslick for participating in the hearing for the Board of Education. I will be testifying on the 28th, which is next Tuesday. Well, some of us got moved around a little bit just to make sure there was some space because apparently it's going to be pretty busy on Tuesday. Also, tomorrow, I will be, is it tomorrow? No, it's Friday, Friday. I have an opportunity to participate with the Council of Governments Executive Board for the DMV Moves Initiative. They're doing a railways tour. So I'll be participating in that. And I believe, if my calendar is correct, I don't want to say this if it's not true, but I do have it on my calendar. I believe there may be a ribbon cutting, but I will confirm on Saturday. In addition to Monster Bash, I mean, can I do a, you know what? I probably shouldn't say this because I'm not sure if it's exactly sure, true. And given the time, I will likely be in my costume. I'm not going to bore folks with the details, but there may be. I, I, but there's a possibility for a ribbon cutting on Saturday. Terrific ink ribbon.
Will you be revealing your identity in advance or will the costume be a surprise for everybody?
I think my costume will be, I'm going to keep it a surprise. I won't be, you can't miss me, let's just say that. Wonderful. And so that is all I have. I'm going to turn things over to our city manager for city manager comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council and residents and guests. I want to just first also underscore some of the comments that the mayor made with respect to Mr. Williams. I too wish on behalf of the administration to thank him for his, making the effort to come down and share his thoughts and his passion with us. You know, we're listening. So thank you, Mr. Williams, for that. I will also reassert the point that the mayor made that, and by the way, Director Clark has been on the meeting the whole time. I mean, he's watching and he communicated with me following the comments. And he just wished me to stress that no youth are ever barred if there's a concern about ability to pay. And so the mayor and council's credit, the mayor and council budget annually at 100% for youth scholarships. So that's really ultimately not an issue. There is a three-quarter page announcement in the brochure with each brochure that goes out, as well as the online version and recreation information online. And the social media also prominently mentions the scholarships. So we're always open to additional ideas to put the word out. But it has been prominently advertised in numerous ways. So I just wanted to share that. From the Communication Department, "The City of Tacoma Park invites you, our residents, to share your ideas and suggestions regarding next year's city budget, which is currently under development. The Tacoma Park Community Budget Survey is one way to share any ideas and innovations that you think the city should consider as part of its upcoming fiscal year budget development. This survey has been prominently advertised and available in the city newsletter, which is delivered to every home. It's also on the city website and on city social media." Survey details, the survey should take about 10 minutes to complete. We would sincerely appreciate your input. The survey would be, will be open until 12:00 PM on Wednesday, November 12th. So there's lots of time left, but don't wait. You can complete the FY 2027 Community Budget Survey online at tacoparkmd.gov. Paper versions are also available in this month's city newsletter and at drop boxes at the library, at the rec center, and the second floor lobby of the community center. Please note, the paper version is in English and Spanish. The online version is translated into Spanish, French, and then Hauric. We also have additional copies at the drop-off sites, which are at those three locations that I mentioned. From the Housing and Community Development Department, "Traffic calming and sidewalk requests? See a problem? Let us know." As specified in the administrative regulations, a Tacoma Park resident may submit a request to the city manager for a new sidewalk or a new traffic calming device located within one quarter of a mile from their primary residence. Requests submitted by October 31st will be considered by council in the budget process for the following year. That would be for FY 27. Later requests will be considered for future budget years. Please submit your requests by Friday, October 31st on the city's website, Drop traffic calming and sidewalk requests in the search field. From the Recreation Department, as mentioned just recently here, Monster Bash returns Saturday, October 25th. Join the city at Tacoma Recreation Department for our annual Monster Bash, a fun-filled afternoon of costumes, music, and community spirit. The event schedule is as follows. 1:00 PM is kickoff at Tacoma Park Middle School parking lot. 2:00 PM, costume parade begins on Piney Branch Road, ending on Maple Avenue. After the parade, there is an awards ceremony and live concert by The Grandsons Junior. For more information, including street closures, please visit tacoparkmd.gov/recreation. And finally, from the city manager's office, tonight's shout-out is to Monique Miller from the Human Resources Department. Over the past several months, Monique has been organizing the first Staff Benefits and Wellness Fair that the city has hosted in many years. With the support of the entire HR team, the fair occurred yesterday and was a resounding success. Using wellness funds from the city's transition to Cigna Health this year, many employees were able to take a few moments out of their busy day to take part in cooking classes, learn more about their health and dental benefits, meet with a retirement advisor, and leave with a bag of local fruits and vegetables to encourage healthy eating habits. There are also numerous informational stations on health. So thank you, Monique, and the rest of the HR team for all of your hard work in running this event and continuing to foster the city's commitment to employee health and wellness. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. And that concludes our meeting for this evening. I am moving that we adjourn. Run away with that? Awesome. Have a great night.